Let me know. Okay. Good evening. This is Chairwoman Makina Scott. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, March 23, 2021. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County. Mr. Mahumza, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Baltimore County Public Schools and Offices are currently closed to the public in order to maintain the health and safety of our students and staff. In accordance with the Board of Education's amended resolution approved at the October 13, 2020 board meeting, in the event of a medical or health emergency related to COVID-19, the board chair, in consultation with the vice chair and the superintendent, may declare that a board meeting or a board committee meeting be held remotely in its entirety, without the physical presence of board members or in a hybrid manner, with only some individual board members participating remotely, subject to the establishment of a mechanism that would allow each board member the opportunity to fully participate in the meeting despite not being physically present, and that would allow the public to also remotely attend those portions of the meeting that are open pursuant to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, by being able to listen and review those portions of the meeting. As a result, tonight's hybrid Board of Education meeting is being held both virtually and in person by board members and broadcasted through Microsoft Teams Live and BCPSTV Comcast Xfinity Channel 73, Fios Channel 34, excuse me, and Verizon Fios Channel 34. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. Board members will say their names while making and seconding a motion as applicable, as well as requesting discussion on an agenda item. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the consideration of the March 23 agenda. Dr. Williams, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
Good evening. I'm not aware of any additions or changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Hearing none, the agenda stands as presented. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please? Oh, we don't, thank you. I apologize. The agenda is approved. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to one, discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; seven, consult with counsel to obtain legal advice; nine, conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations; nine, conduct collective bargaining negotiations, excuse me, or consider matters that relate to the negotiations; and 15, discuss cybersecurity. If the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to: one, security assessments or deployments relating to information, resources, technology; two, network security information; or three, deployments or implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. The minutes of the closed session and informal summary can be found on board docs under this board meeting agenda date. The next item on the agenda is personnel matters, and for that, I call on Ms. Lowry.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chairwoman Hen, Superintendent Williams, and members of the board. I would like the board's consent for the following personnel matters: retirements, resignations, recognition of deceased.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented in Exhibits D1 through D3?
So moved.
Second past your.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Gover?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Mahumza?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman? Mr. Offerman? Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman? Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the report on board policies. Members of the board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the board accept this committee's approved proposed changes to the following board policies. Those. Policy 6002, selection of instructional materials. Policy 8221, Chair/Vice Chair duties. Policy 8311, meetings. Policy 8314, meetings' agenda. Policy 8360, ethics code applicability and definitions. Policy 8361, ethics code statement of purpose and policy. Policy 8362, ethics code gifts. Policy 8363, ethics code conflict of interest, prohibited conduct. Policy 8364, ethics code financial disclosure statements. Policy 8365, ethics code lobbying. Policy 8366, ethics code review panel. And Policy 8601, use of social media. These recommendations are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibit E. So do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the board's Policy Review Committee? Okay, so I don't, so there's no motion to accept the recommendation of the Policy Review Committee? Hmm, okay.
So moved.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Who was that?
Josh.
Mr. Mahumza. Okay, so no second is needed. Since the recommendation comes from the committee, is there any discussion? Looks like we have... Dr. Hager.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to discuss the policies 8311, 8314, and 8601 separately. Do I have to make a motion to separate those out to have three separate discussions? Or is that just something I can ask for?
We can separate those out.
Thank you.
Okay. 8311, which is meetings. 8314, which is meetings' agenda. And 8601, which is the new social media policy. So we're separating out three... Dr. Hager put it there. We're separating out one, two, and actually... Yeah, three, four, and 12. Thank you. Okay. And I just wanted to check. Do we need a motion to separate those out? Or we can just separate them out for discussion? Okay. So then, would we then approve the others? And then separate these out? Mr. Mercedes, could you advise on that?
Yes, you can vote on the others now.
Okay. So that... Yes, was there a question?
Yes, this is Ms. Hen.
Yes, Ms. Hen.
I'd also like to ask that we separate 8221.
8221. And that is... And that is the Policy Chair/Vice Chair duties.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the other policies other than the ones that we were separating out? We're separating out 8221, 8311, 8314, and 8601.
Can I have the microphone?
Yeah, do I have a motion to approve the other policies outside of those? And then we can discuss the others?
So moved, Josh.
Thank you. And no second is needed since it comes from the committee? Okay. And then, do we need to take a vote on those, on that, Mr. Mercedes?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. If we could, Ms. Gover, do a roll call vote. Ms. Rowe? Could someone please mute their microphone?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
No.
Ms. Mack? I'm sorry?
We can't hear you, Ms. Mack.
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Mahumza?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman? Mr. Offerman? Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Thank you. So that carries. So now, we can have discussion on the others. And I believe it was Dr. Hager first, and then Ms. Hen.
If I have that correct.
Yeah, so I was hoping to talk about each one individually. So should we start with AD? Which one do you want to start with?
It's up to you, either one. You can, if you like, you could go in order.
Okay. So I had 8311 listed first. And so I just, I had concern... My only main concern was that I believe that this policy was meant to address part of the Inspector General's concern about interruptions during board meetings in general. And I guess when we come back to in-person meetings, this is only meant to address hybrid meetings. And so will this sufficiently address the Inspector General's concern?
I can actually answer that. That was, that policy was in regards to doing remote meetings and how we would govern our decorum and ourselves remotely. The Inspector General's concern, and both of the letters are in board docs, was around behavior of social media as well as decorum. So it would, it would address some of that, but not all of it.
Okay, I don't know if others have questions about 8311.
Any other questions on 8311?
Yes, Madam Chair, one comment.
Yes. Ms. Hen?
So 8311 has been updated, as Dr. Hager said, with special rules for virtual meetings, including empowering the chair to disconnect or mute any board member, causing, quote, "undue interference" with the meeting. My concern is that undue interference is broad, and it's not defined in the policy. And it allows for censorship of 11 board members by one board member. I'd like to see the committee clarify and expand upon that language with specific instances where the chair would have that authority. I'd also like to get advice from legal in terms of this policy change infringing on board members' freedom of speech.
I'm sorry, you said you'd like to get legal advice on this policy, 8311 infringing on freedom of speech?
I'd like this policy to go back to committee so that legal can advise on the changes infringing upon board members' freedom of speech.
Okay, because this was reviewed in committee, and Ms. Causey was on the committee, and she still is, as well as Ms. Rowe, when it was first discussed and reviewed.
I'm sorry, I am no longer on that committee.
No, you're not. But you were when this first came up. It was prior to my chairwomanship, actually, when this policy was drafted.
Yes. And my concern is that undue interference with the meeting is not defined and is subject to interpretation by the chair with this authority. I'd like to see the policy expanded with more specific definitions around that.
Around undue interference.
Forward.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hen. And I'm going in order, it looks like Mr. Mahumza and then Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I guess I have a question and a comment. My first, my question would be towards Ms. Howie. I remember, and I don't remember exactly what part from the Open Meetings Act training that I took earlier in my term, but it mentioned the board has the power to remove the public if they're causing interference with the meeting. Did that also mention board members who are interrupting or causing interference with the meeting?
So actually, Mr. Mahumza, the undue interference language comes directly from Robert's Rules of Order and specifically from the Appendix Concerning Rules for Electronic Meetings.
Thank you. Yeah. My only comment on this policy is going to be short. It's not, the insinuation by the board member that the chair is going to act unilaterally to remove any board member, just... First of all, if it's there...
I'm sorry, could someone please mute?
Yeah. Like I, like what occurred last meeting, where we learned that the chair, the ruling of the chair can obviously be overturned by the vote of the board. So it's not like the chair is acting unilaterally without any checks on their power. And in terms of free speech, this policy only addresses interference with the meeting. It doesn't reference speech. I mean, you're free to speak when it's time, it's your time to speak. But interference with the meeting is more like sounds in the background. If a person would have your credentials there, then it's warranted to remove them from the meeting. But it doesn't address anything but speech. Thank you. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mahumza. It looks like, and I'm trying to go in order, Ms. Causey, and then Ms. Rowe, and then Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would support a revisit of this policy, given the comments about clarifying and having board counsel specifically perhaps provide clarification in that clause. The board counsel was not at the Policy Review Committee meeting. So if there was a review by counsel at a later time, I'm not aware of that. So I would support moving it back to the PRC. The other thing that I would support is really the, and we've seen this from comments from constituents, and also in terms of comparing with other meetings that are virtual, the consistent use of turning the cameras on so that our constituents and our staff, the superintendent, are aware that the board members are engaged, paying attention, they are focused 100% on the very important topics that we're discussing relating to our students and our staff and our families. So I would like consideration of that. And I'm not going to make a motion at this time, but if other board members want to comment on that or if Mr. Mercedes would like to comment on that.
So, Ms. Causey, I would direct your attention to Page 4, video display, which does address the speaker at the moment, the board member who is speaking, having to have his or her video displayed at the time.
Yes, so that's the only time. It's, in my last reading of it, it's not when the roll call, it's not when voting occurs.
You're correct, ma'am. That was not discussed in committee, nor is there a request at that time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Rowe.
I agree that there are certain aspects of this, which Ms. Hen pointed out, that are vague and require definitions. And those definitions need to be articulated in the policy because right now, it is subject to interpretation what constitutes interference at a meeting. And I move to move this back, this policy back to Policy Review Committee to further deliberate on those definitions.
Second, Hen.
Could you put that motion in the chat, please?
Number's 8311, right?
Yes. Is it in the chat yet?
Hang on, I'm writing it. Okay, there you go.
Okay, so Ms. Rowe has made a motion to move Policy 8311 back to PRC to deliberate on the definitions associated with the policy. That was moved and seconded by Ms., moved by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Ms. Hen. Ms. Gover, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Madam Chair, may I comment before we vote?
I thought all the comments, I thought we well debated this. There's additional comments?
I had indicated I'd like to comment in the chat after Ms. Rowe.
Yes, please go ahead.
In response to Mr. Mahumza's comment that I was inferring that Madam Chair would act unilaterally, that was not an inference. It was a statement of what's in the policy. The chair makes the decision. The chair mutes or disconnects members. That is my concern. It does not say that the chair deliberates with the board to vote on muting or disconnecting the member who's causing undue interference. So it is a decision exclusively by the chair, and I think it warrants clarification and specific instances when the chair may use this authority. To mute or disconnect a member from a meeting is a serious consequence. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahumza, you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Just, Mr. Mercedes, yes or no? Last meeting, didn't you say last meeting that a ruling by the chair can be overturned by the board by a vote?
Yes, a ruling by the chair can be appealed, and it is subject to a majority vote.
So no, so like I said, Ms. Hen, a chair by, a ruling by a chair is not unilateral. The board can check the powers of the chair, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, may I respond?
We, oh, okay. We really need to vote on this. Please.
Thank you. Once muted or disconnected, which is implied would be instantaneously, the consequence has already been delivered. So once, the board could appeal the decision, but the board member has already been muted or disconnected. Thank you.
And Ms. Rowe?
So, yeah, I agree that the way the policy is written, if a chair can just mute or disconnect a board member, that prevents the board member from even raising a point of order or having the ruling of the chair. And there is no ruling if the chair has the authority to just do it. So I believe that the policy needs to go back to PRC to more clearly articulate what constitutes disruption and under what circumstances the chair may simply mute or disconnect members from the meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Gover, may we do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Mahumza?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
No.
Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No. Favors nine.
Okay, so 8311, we'll go back to committee. The next one, we were going in order. Dr. Hager, which policy would you like to?
So I had 8314 written down next, which has to do with budget setting, or budget setting, addenda setting.
Okay.
That's correct. So I read the analysis, and I looked at the policies that were linked in the analysis from Anarodto County and Frederick County and Hartford County. Prince George's link did not work. It was to an internal drive of some sort. And I didn't see in those, in that analysis, the changes that were made specific to our policy. And so, and then I listened to the meeting as well, and it was still unclear to me as to why these changes were specifically being made, which are that once the agenda is set, it is set in stone unless someone would like to make a change. They have to submit it 24 hours ahead of time, and then it needs a unanimous vote. And I just would also like to say that today, we didn't get the, some of the materials for this meeting until noon, after 12 o'clock. And so I think it just makes it really hard to make a policy that we can't change the agenda except for 24 hours ahead of time, which allows us to not make time-sensitive decisions, especially if we're not guaranteed to have all the information we need for a given meeting. So I just had some concerns about those changes.
Any other discussion? Looks like there's a comment from Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Hager articulated my concerns, which are the same two aspects of the policy change. One, that it requires written notice 24 hours in advance to make a motion to amend the agenda. I agree that we are often not receiving information in a timely enough fashion to be able to prepare motions 24 hours in advance. My second concern is that it requires unanimous consent of the full board to amend the agenda. This allows for one member, through a dissenting vote, to control the, all agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Next, Ms. Rowe?
Yes, I completely object to Section BC, which requires unanimous vote to amend the agenda. And I will not ever vote in favor of this policy that contains that. I also completely object to giving motions 24 hours in advance. I think that that is unduly restrictive. It's one thing to supply motions in writing during the meeting so they can be read. But there is nothing in Robert's Rules of Order that sets a precedent for having to supply motions 24 hours in advance. So I object to both of those things. So I will not be voting in favor of this policy.
Thank you. Ms. Causey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not agree with the change to make it a unanimous vote to change the agenda. There are multiple board members, if not the majority of board members, that utilized the ability to add agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. And I would say that many of those times, it was very important and timely to do so. And I would say that as chair, I was not given notice in advance on most of those occasions. But with the will of the board being expressed, then I did facilitate and coordinate the effort of adding those agenda items that were approved. I would also point out that at just the last meeting, there was an agenda item requested by the Building and Contracts Chair at the request of the superintendent to add an emergency contract. So there are any number of situations where the agenda may need to be adjusted at the beginning of the meeting. There have also been many times where, over the years, and again, I've been on the board since 2015, where items were removed. There may have been a personnel decision where we were hoping to have all of the paperwork done, but then we weren't, and so we could not make an administrative appointment. So we had to remove that at the request of the superintendent. So I don't support that at all. And in fact, the history of that is when I first came on the board, that was the case. And it was completely used as a limiting factor for very important topics to be discussed. And the other board member that was on prior with me will recall that there was a number of times that transportation could not be discussed, curriculum issues could not be discussed, safety issues related to the children could not be discussed because they were not put on the agenda by the chair. And in the open meeting, it took a unanimous vote, and that was not achieved. And Vice Chair Hen and I, when we were Chair and Vice Chair in January of 2019, we made the recommendation to the board the recommendation to the Board, and I appreciate the Board's support at that time to allow this rule to be more inclusive and allow Board members to have collaboration.
Thank you, Ms. Causey. And I would just say that this is, the comparison that you made to the previous Board with this, unanimous consent was drafted or put in there because there have been agenda items that have been added at the last minute that were not well-vetted, staff was not prepared to present, and I think that that does us as a Board a disservice, and especially when items could have been brought up beforehand. So, I feel unanimous consent means that if we're going to have our meetings elongated by various items regardless of what they are, then we all need to agree to that. Also, something I've implemented prior to even becoming Chair was where we do agenda setting at the end of every meeting, so everyone has an opportunity, so we do hear what people want. So, it's not like this is constricting, and we don't have other options or other ways to add to the agenda. Also, motions in 24 hours, I want to speak to that as well, because I'm sure the public has heard me asked several times, and Board members have heard me ask for motions to come and to be put into the chat so they can be properly stated, and that still is not happening. I've asked, I've spoken about it, so that was why, in the spirit of that, so that we could actually state something proper and not just have it at the last minute and misstate it and restate it and be incorrect in the statement. It's some organization and some formality to it. So, that is where that came from. So, now, it looks like we had, Ms. Mack, next?
Yes, I just wanted to support what Ms. Rowe said. I do not support the motions 24 hours in advance. The motion I made at the last meeting to add payroll issues was made because I was waiting till the last minute to see if, based on the thousands of emails that we received, that would have been added to the agenda, and when it was not, I used a motion to add it to the agenda because it's very important, and I believe we as Board members need the flexibility to add to the agenda when things that are happening to our students, our teachers, are not on the agenda to be discussed. So, I would not support these changes at all. Thank you.
Ms. Hen?
Thank you. I move to refer Policy 8314 back to the Policy Review Committee to address the concerns mentioned by Board members.
Second, pause.
Okay, thank you, and I will ask once again if you could put that in the chat so that motion can be properly stated. So, Ms. Hen moved that Policy 8314 be referred back to committee to address the concerns raised by Board members, and that was seconded by Ms. Causey, I believe?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, and so, it looks like there is a comment from Ms. Pastore, and then Dr. Hager.
Thank you. My first, the first part of my comment goes to the 24 hours. I worry that we have so many motions that really impact, and of late, I've seen some of those, that really impact on the system, they impact, could impact fiscally, they impact in terms of the educational process in the system, and I think that all members should have the opportunity to do their homework, to be able to ask questions, to share information or to glean information before coming to a meeting and having something that is going to have long-term impact on the system put before us where we do have to make a decision. Now, I realize that what goes with that is that sometimes there are motions that arise that are certainly simpler in nature, but I do believe that either, there has to be something about the language, but 24 hours, to me, is on the outside, that some of the motions that are made need to be sent in even with more time than that. And again, the notion of the adding to the agenda, again, I think Ms. Scott said it, we've had an opportunity to make notes before meetings have ended if we have any additional items that we would like to have included on the agenda, and we're always able, unless I'm incorrect, and I stand corrected, that prior to agenda setting, that members, is that correct, that prior to agenda setting, you can ask one of the officers to add something? Thank you.
Thank you, and also, we do agenda setting around the day, so.
Yes.
So, okay, and Dr. Hager?
As, if this motion does pass and it does go back to the PRC, I really like reading the analysis and linking to the other policies, and so, I would ask that staff kind of find the precedent or the existing policies that support some of these actions, because again, the ones that were listed, I couldn't find where in other counties are following similar rules, and so, I just would like to see the analysis expanded to kind of help to justify this type of approach to agenda setting and to the 24-hour motions. So, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Could we take a roll call vote, Ms. Gover, on the motion to move 8314 back to committee or refer it back to committee?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Mahomes?
No.
Mr. Offerman?
No.
Ms. Pastore?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Favors seven.
Okay, so then, that one will go back to committee as well, 8314. Okay, and next, we have 8601, I believe was next. Dr. Hager?
Yeah, so this is the social media policy. I really am grateful that the staff tackled this, because I know this was a big, a big new policy that we have taken on. So, once again, I read the links in the analysis that the staff had done. There was one link that didn't work to a policy in Louisiana, one to guidelines out of Texas, and then one to a New Jersey school board policy, which was helpful to read. And I just think that there's a, that I think it's a great first step, but I think there are a lot of additional areas that could be addressed in a social media policy, and I'm a little bit concerned about the violation section and just how that will be enforced within, and I just feel like, again, more content is needed to kind of elaborate on how we're going to do that, but then I think that there are areas of existing policies that we could adapt. And I was very surprised to hear at the meeting when I listened in that there is no Maryland LEA with a social media policy, but I imagine there are guidelines that exist somewhere out there similar to the Texas guidelines that we referenced. So, this is just one that I felt that I'm not comfortable personally with this draft. I think it could be enhanced a lot, given that it's so important and that I'm really glad we're doing this, but I do think it just needs more content, basically.
So, excuse me, Dr. Hager, if I could clarify, and I believe it's indicated in the policy analysis, that there are no other local boards in Maryland that have social media policy for Board members. Not that there are no other LEAs that have social media policies, as you will see when the employee social media policy is brought forward next month, no other local boards have similar policies that control Board member or indicate any sort of guidelines for Board member conduct.
No, and I appreciate that, and I heard that discussion during the PRC meeting as well. So, I just, again, I'm sure there are, there's a little bit more of an analysis that we can do, given how important this is, especially with the Inspector General's request that we have something like this. So, those are my only comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hager, and next, Ms. Hen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too support the idea of a social media policy, however, I agree with Dr. Hager that the current version needs work, and I have some specific concerns. One, it states that Board members should not deliberate Board business on social media. We're in the business of education. What we post is education-related matters of education in Baltimore County. I can see that being broadly construed to indicate deliberating Board business on social media. So, I believe that that needs expansion and specific definition about what constitutes Board business, or alternate terminology used, because according to this, any matter we discuss on education could be construed as violation of the policy. Secondly, it states that Board members shall not disseminate content generated by the Board or the school system that the Board or the school system has not already released to the public. So, according to this, anything that is already public or discussed in open session that is not specifically or explicitly published by BCPS would also be a violation of the policy. So, again, I think this needs clarification and definition pertaining to exactly what content. It's presumed, and this discusses what confidential content is, and I agree that confidential content should not be shared, however, I think we need greater definition around already public content. Lastly, it states that Board members should always conduct themselves online in a manner that reflects well of the Board and the school system, which I agree, and shall avoid posting information that has not been verified and made public by the Board or school system. Again, this places a constraint, and it's vague in what is considered information that has not been verified, but verified by whom? Made public by the Board or the school system. We don't publish a lot of information, either as a Board or as a school system, around a lot of matters. So, again, I feel we need further definition, further clarification around the publishing of content.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Next, Ms. Rowe?
I agree with everything that Ms. Hen said, and in particular, that Section E that says Board members should always conduct themselves online in a manner that reflects well of the Board and the school system, and shall avoid posting information that has been verified and made public by the Board or the school system. The fact of the matter is, the IG's letter did not simply illustrate that Board members were subject of complaints, but school system staff also were subject of complaints, and the letter suggested a policy that deals with both Board members and all school system staff. And this policy subjects Board members to a stricter set of standards than school system staff are participating in on Twitter, and so, I do not believe that it's appropriate when this Board is the accountability and public-facing accountability elected hybrid Board, for elected members to have what facts or information they can share be limited, when in fact, school system staff share anything and everything they want, whether it's been disseminated by BCPS or not. So, I object to this.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Next, we have, oh, Dr. Hager, was that a question, or, actually, I can answer that. Next, it looks like we have a comment from Ms. Mack?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Scott. I agree with a lot of what is said. I personally have problems with Section E, and shall avoid posting information that has not been verified and made public by the Board or the school system. On my Facebook page, I sometimes post academic achievement data. I did not receive that data from the school system. I did receive it from a verified source, the Maryland State Department of Education on the Maryland Report Card, and I would not want anybody to tell me that I cannot post information that I know to be accurate because it's provided to any user via a website. So, I have a problem with a lot of this, but specifically, that piece of it stands out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Causey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also agree that we need to really evaluate having this policy, and I'm grateful that we've started the work, but in the Policy Review Committee meeting, I expressed concerns about this policy that were not addressed. Additionally, as was pointed out about content, there's content that comes from a variety of sources, including research papers, we have, we get articles from the National School Board Association, we get a lot of content from the Maryland Association Boards of Education, there's a lot of issues in legislative session related to education that are informational to constituents and stakeholders around education, so there's a whole manner of content that may be relevant that, under this policy, would be a violation. Also, I understand that the OIGE had provided some examples of policies to consider that were forwarded in January. Anaronda County Public Schools, it's an employee policy, but it also, you know, could then be evaluated to be adopted, and the fact that they're in Maryland where we have our own Opens Meetings Act laws and things of that nature, I would like that to be fully evaluated, along with a number of other policies. Washington County, and it was suggested to look at the Baltimore County Police Department, which has a social media policy that we could also evaluate. So, I, and I also would like to point out that a Board member cannot do Board work on a Facebook page, or any other social media for that matter. Board work is done with the Board in an appropriate meeting. So, for some of the issues related to, is a Board member doing Board work on a Facebook page?
Thank you, Ms. Causey.
That's not even relevant.
Yes, and I just wanted to interject briefly, because I don't want us to get away from the reason why this social media policy came into being was because it was recommended from the Office of the Inspector General for Education, and these letters are on Board Docs if the public or anyone else or any Board members would like to review, but the Office of the Inspector General for Education has received numerous complaints concerning some Board members' decorum while conducting meetings and communications through the use of social media with the Baltimore County Public Schools Board of Education. So, there were numerous complaints about the behavior of Board members. So, we can't get away from that. This policy didn't drop out of the sky. This policy was not something that we just created just because. It is a reason, and I have been directed, as the Inspector General has said, he refers it to the Chair for further action. So, the action is to create a robust policy, and I believe it was Ms. Rowe who said Board members are being held to standards that employees are not, but Board members should be held to higher standards than employees, because we are Board members and we lead the school system. So, it is not, so this is not just falling out of the sky, and I think that we're getting away from the reason that this was created. So, I just wanted to make sure that we said that, and I'm sorry, I believe I skipped over to Mr. Mahomes. My apologies, sir.
I believe I was next, Madam Chair.
I thought I saw further up where he had a comment. I apologize. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mahomes, and then Ms. Hen.
I'm sorry, I was next, Madam Chair.
I think I already spoke.
Yeah, Mr. Mahomes has not yet spoke, Ms. Hen. Go ahead, Mr. Mahomes.
Yes, my comment slash question is not related to even the policy, but I believe Ms. Rowe just, and I believe even you mentioned it, that staff members have been posting on Twitter information that has not been verified by the school system, and since this meeting is going to be our official minutes, and that's going to be published to the public, I would like for her to give an example of when has this occurred, because I think that's a big accusation, and if, without any evidence against staff members, and without even that being brought to the Superintendent, I just think if we're going to say something back to the public, it has to be factual, and there has to be evidence provided.
I'm happy to qualify that statement.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I have a point of order. I do not believe it is appropriate to discuss a specific personnel matter, so I think Mr. Mahomes has a point.
One moment.
I do not think that Ms. Rowe should respond with a specific example regarding personnel.
One moment, Ms. Causey. Thank you for that. Mr. Mahomes, were you responding, asking for a specific example? Mr. Mahomes, were you responding asking for a specific example of an employee who has done something, or were you asking?
It doesn't even have to be a name of the employee, but an information specifically that has been released without verification from the school system. Is that appropriate to ask?
I don't know that that would be appropriate to ask. Mr. Mercedes, is that an appropriate question for?
We would want to, we would want to steer away from discussion of any particular employee action.
Yes.
I can qualify my statement.
I don't, I think we should go with, with the advice of Mr. Mercedes.
And I apologize for that, but I just think we have to be very careful if we're going to make that a continuation because I don't, I don't know what the current policy for employees are, but I don't think any employee has ever released any information to the public, especially using their official account or speaking in their role. And if that's the case, I would like the superintendent, and this doesn't have to be in public, to investigate that because that is a very serious claim.
Thank you, Mr. Mahomes. And now we have Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One last comment, and then I have a motion. Professor Elliott King at Loyola College, who is a specialist in new media, commented to the media on the proposed policies and specifically 8601, stating that the part of the policy he finds most objectionable is the portion that describes the possibility of sanction if guidelines are violated. I quote, "It would be, if it would be legitimate for you to say that in a public, open school board meeting, it's legitimate for you to say it online." So the last concern I wanted to express is with the sanctions that are austere. We've received several public comments regarding their severity, and I would like the committee to revisit that. So with that, I'd like to move to refer Policy 8601 back to committee to address the concerns raised by board members and the public.
Second, Causey.
And if we could have that again in the chat?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's in the chat.
That was quick. Thank you, Ms. Hen. So Ms. Hen has moved to refer Policy 8601 back to committee to address concerns raised by board members and the public, and it was seconded by Ms. Rowe? And Ms.?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Skover, maybe we do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Oh, we're in the middle of a vote.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Mahomes?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pester?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so that goes back to committee as well. Ms. Pester, you had a question?
Okay, I had a comment, which is sort of a moot point now. And it goes to the whole issue of, it's a moot point. It's a moot point because it's going back and it's, it's just that, as Ms. Causey said and Ms. Rowe said, staff and, and board members, the IG's letter indicated policy and handbook. And my point was, and this is why it's moot now, because there needs to be an alignment between what's in our handbook and what the policy says. And Ms. Causey referenced Anarundel County, the Sheriff's Office, et cetera, the things that were in the letter. And as we create the handbook policy, we are taking a look at that. And so they need to be in sync with each other. That was my point.
Thank you. And next is 8221. That was, I believe, brought forward by Ms. Hen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have similar concerns regarding 8221 and would like to see the committee revisit this to add definition and clarification. Specifically, the policy change adds consequences for board members who speak on behalf of the board up to and including recommending that a board, that a member be removed from the board. My two concerns are, I would like to see greater definition on speak on behalf of the board because it could be something as minute as saying, well, the board thinks such and such based on a vote that was taken and passed, which would be a true statement given that the board has taken action on an issue. Secondly, it does not detail how the consequences would be administered and by whom. And I believe the board needs to make that clear and decide as a board how we want those, one, to determine whether a violation has occurred, and two, to determine what consequence, if any, would be issued. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on 8221?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion following that, when I may?
Yes.
Thank you. I move to refer Policy 8221 back to committee to address concerns raised by board members and the public.
Second, Rowe.
Okay. And if you could put that in chat? Ms. Pester, you have a question?
I just wanted to know if I could start raising my voice.
Do you want to say something?
No.
Okay. All right. So Ms. Hen made a motion, and it's to move and refer Policy 8221 back to committee to address concerns raised by board members and the public. And that was seconded by Ms. Rowe, I believe. And question from Ms. Causey.
Madam Chair, did Ms. Hen speak to her motion?
I believe she did. She, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hen, you spoke to it actually before your motion was made.
I, I did speak to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I support sending this back. I won't take a lot of time to express why, but I just think that there can be improvements that can be made additionally, clarifications around what it means to be the spokesperson for the board, which is speaking on behalf of the board, positions the board has taken. So it's not, it's not, and, and we, we know this, but not everyone knows this, that it's not the chair's opinion. It's the chair expressing the board's opinion or actions or so forth. And how, and to clarify how that's separate from an individual board member expressing, for instance, board policy, they're not speaking on behalf of the board. They're speaking on their own behalf, but they are using published documents and sharing information related to public documents. So there needs to be some clarification, I believe. I think it is appropriate to have a spokesperson on behalf of the board, and I think it needs a lot more clarity. And I also am concerned about the, the, that really the punitive aspect was what was added without clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Causey. Next is Ms. Rowe, and then Dr. Hager.
So one of the things that I think would improve these consequences sections of these policies greatly is I do not believe that consequences of this severity should be imposed upon a board member without being reviewed by the board's ethics review panel because they are independent and you can have, the, the board should not be deciding to impose consequences without reviews of the ethics review panel. So I, I would like to see language requiring the ethics review panel to investigate and review any accusations prior to anything being done to a board member. And I would like to see the recommendations for punitive actions against board members come from the board's ethics review panel, not other board members. I think that that's what the ethics review panel is there for, and I would like to see that language.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Next is Dr. Hager.
I just have a question. It's very clear that it's, the policy says only the board chair has the right to speak on behalf of the board, but aren't there circumstances where the board chair may not be able to speak and may appoint someone in their, on their behalf? It's just a small, small detail, but given the severity of the consequences, again, it seems like there, there's maybe some...
It is in there in the policy.
Oh, it is? I'm sorry.
Yeah, where the chair can appoint someone.
Oh, I apologize. I, I did not see that. I'm sorry. I take that back.
And? Any other questions? Okay. So are we ready to take a roll call vote on the motion made by Ms. Hen to refer Policy 8221 back to committee? If we could do a roll call vote? Thank you.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Mahomes?
No.
Mr. Offerman?
No.
Ms. Pester?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Favor is seven.
Okay, so that goes back to committee as well. Okay, great. So, so we've reviewed all of our policies. All right, so our next item is public comment. This is one of the opportunities the board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. As appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the superintendent for follow-up by his staff. The Board of Education will conduct the public portion, the public comment portion of the meeting by allowing those registered to call in by phone. Registration was open to the public one week prior to tonight's board meeting and was closed at 3:00 PM yesterday for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits, limits to 10 the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Of course, if fewer than 10 registrations are received, all who registered will be permitted to speak. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this board and this school system, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing dispute resolution processes and as appropriate. I remind everyone that inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. Speakers, we ask that speakers to observe the three-minute time limit and conclude remarks when time has expired and you hear the tone. The call will be ended, and it could be turned off if a speaker addresses specific student or employee matters or is commenting on matters not related to public education in Baltimore County. If not selected, the public may submit their comments to the board members via email at boe@bcps.org. More information is provided on the board's website at bcps.org under Board of Education, Participation by the Public. It is the practice of this board to allow elected officials to provide their comments to the board. First to speak is Dr. Crystal Francis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Williams, Superintendent, and members of the board. Thank you so much for all of your hard work during these challenging times, COVID-19. I just wanted to make comments regarding the challenges of COVID-19 that have been brought to our attention. I'm calling on behalf of, of course, the State Central Committee for Baltimore County and would like the superintendent to just take note of some of the complaints that we've received via email regarding teachers reaching out indicating that some teachers in different schools do not have the appropriate PPE. Teachers are actually purchasing using their own money to buy materials to clean their classrooms, and they don't believe that the school is currently following CDC guidelines as it relates to health check-ins. So I'm not exactly sure of, you know, how, you know, what the superintendent has in place to ensure that all schools are following the appropriate CDC guidelines for ensuring that people are properly screened before entering the building. So these are just concerns that were raised that we would like, you know, the board and the superintendent to look at further to, number one, ensure that teachers do have enough PPE, that they are not required to utilize their own funds to purchase that stuff for cleaning of the classroom, and that the screening is taking place, the health check screening, so individuals who are being screened for COVID-19 symptoms before entering the building, that there are mechanisms in place to ensure that that screening is happening prior to entering the building because if a person that does have COVID is screened inside the building, contamination could have already taken place. And so that, those are the items I would like to bring to your attention. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Charles, Senator Charles Sitner.
Thank you, and good evening. I wanted to testify briefly on two matters. One is school reopening as well as Policy 8601. First, I want to acknowledge that there is no one who knows how this virus is going to continue affecting our county while we're moving forward towards a vaccination level that will protect everyone. With that, I appreciate the work that our superintendent and the board is doing as we're moving forward in-person learning with all deliberate speed. There are a number of factors that we still do not know, and our erst is born to support his efforts as he does what is best for all BCPS students and not be swayed by those because they make or may be more vocal. Much has been made about the mental health challenges for students learning virtually, but less has been said about the anxieties that students must overcome to feel comfortable simply to sit in a classroom with others. I will share that when this session first started for me in January, I was concerned about precautions that were being taken so as not to endanger myself or others. And even with those precautions, we still had concerns about HVAC systems as well as how this virus moved through those systems. I was concerned about colleagues not wearing masks appropriately and taking precautions noted by our public health officials. So I'm thankful, though, that me and none of my colleagues have been adversely affected by this disease. Before we had, and I would like to say, before we even had an opportunity to examine how two-day, a week in-person schooling and virtual learning is working, I've heard that some parents are beginning to petition this board to open up buildings, not just for hybrid learning, but to fully open up schools for five days a week. I suspect when the system does open in that manner, despite the concerns that families and students may and still have, all students will be forced to return to regular classes five days a week. Now, I do not begrudge any family for wanting to send their children back to school. If the school system is ready and capable of providing them with an environment safe from the virus, but I want the board to understand that this new push to reopen schools completely takes away my family's choice, and I find this unacceptable, and that some of our students are actually thriving within the virtual learning. The information from the Equity Committee's report on hybrid learning cohorts clearly shows that when we are looking at hybrid and virtual learning, families in the West Zone are using virtual learning at a higher rate than those in Central and East Zone. So I simply ask this board to take that into consideration. With regards to Policy 8601, I would ask that the board, since it's going to be reconsidered, look at Davidson versus Randall, which is a Fourth Circuit opinion, and make certain that you also include how this board tends to censor people after they've made comments on their pages. This has happened to me multiple times after statements have been made about me. And as an elected official, certainly I have thick skin and have no problem with people making comments, but if comments are being made, one should be able to defend themselves and not be censored on those pages. So I hope that that will also be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sitner. So next is our stakeholders, and for that, we have Mr. Ryan Coleman.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Williams, and school board members. My name is Ryan Coleman. I'm the president of the Randallstown NAACP. I wanted to thank all the Randallstown members signing on tonight to listen to the school board meeting. Our mission is to advocate for all children, especially children of color. I've listened to every school board meeting since January, and I'm very frustrated. I'm frustrated with the disrespect that has been shown to Madam Chair. I'm frustrated with a lack of focus of increasing academic achievement and outcomes for all students, especially students of color. I'm frustrated that this board has forgotten its purpose, which is the students of Baltimore County. The National School Boards Association has developed indicators of school board effectiveness. One, effective school boards are accountability-driven, spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policies to improve student achievement. This board spends most of its time on being rude to the chair, on agenda items, committee assignments... spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policies to improve student achievement. This board spends most of its time on being rude to the chair, on agenda items, committee assignments, and micromanagement of Dr. Williams. Number two, effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction and define clear goals towards that vision. The Baltimore County School Board rarely talks about instruction, curriculum, professional development, or academic achievement. Number three, effective school boards spend most of their time on increasing academic achievement, yet poor government is characterized by factors such as micromanagement by the board, confusion of the appropriate roles for the board members and superintendent, interpersonal conflict between board chair and members, and board member disregard for the agenda process and the chain of command. This is the Baltimore County School Board in microcosm. This is why, over the past seven years, test scores, academic achievement, and educational outcomes are all trending down. The children are the ones that are being hurt by this, by the dysfunction of this board. I recommend that the board immediately add academic achievement to every agenda, focusing on curriculum, instruction, and professional development to raise academic achievement and educational outcomes for all students, especially students of color. I recommend the board immediately come up with a comprehensive strategic plan with an implementation component to raise test scores and to address persistently low-performing schools. Lastly, I recommend that the members stop filibustering the chair and her agenda. The boards in the past have failed, so we need a new direction. Anything less than this is educational malpractice. The Ranlestown NAACP looks forward to partnering with the board and to hold the board accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Cindy Sexton.
Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. Some students have now been back in school for three weeks. When I visit schools, I see clean buildings and many smiles behind masks. I've seen libraries, gyms, music rooms, classrooms, dismissal, recess, and lunchtime. The staff is doing all they can to engage our virtual students and our face-to-face students. This is hard work. Our educators are again going far above and beyond anything any of us could have imagined. Instruction is happening, and our educators once again found a way to make it work. But the challenges and obstacles haven't stopped. This week has already had Internet and Google Meet concerns. We're still gathering and working through payroll, benefits, and W-2 issues. At Tabco, we are getting calls, emails, and texts around the metrics in Baltimore County and the cases of COVID in schools. In spite of working to have health and safety teams at every work site, we still have confusion and concern over what is happening when there is a suspected case of COVID or a confirmed case. Now also add concerns over priority transfers and staffing in schools. Several weeks ago, I requested a special Board of Ed meeting to be held to address the questions and concerns around ransomware and reopening. That motion did not pass when this board voted on it. At that time, there were 92 pages of questions that our members had. Yes, some of them have been answered, but many have not. I will be sending those questions to the board after my remarks tonight. We still have questions around contact tracing, cleaning, mitigation, quarantining, accommodation, W-2s, pay concerns, leave balances, healthcare benefits, ventilation, vaccinations, transportation, ransomware, what the CARES money funding has been spent on, and what's going on with our state retirement and pension, and many more. We have been patient. We have given the system time. The patience is thin. Every change in the plan, new directive, and new concern adds to the angst and stress of the year that has already been full of angst, distress, and frustration. BCPS needs to work with the reopening plan they have. We need to give our students and our staff a chance to see the plan to fruition and not keep expecting our administrators to change schedules again, our educators to learn another new way to teach, our bus drivers to alter routes, and so many more changes. Let's work with the plan and give everyone time to settle into it. As educators, we know our students do best with a predictable routine. The reopening plan provides that. Let's allow that to be. We continue to ask for collaboration and communication around all the issues and concerns facing us, especially with reopening and ransomware. Let's do all we can to lower stress while still doing all we can for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Tom DeHart.
Yes. The reopening plan provides- Hello.
Good evening, Chair Scott.
Good evening.
And members of the board. It's been a year since I've spoken-
I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. DeHart. I apologize for interrupting. If everybody could mute because we're getting feedback.
Yeah, I was hearing that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, can I start over?
Yes, apologies. You may start over.
Nope, no problem. Good evening, Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. It's been a year since I've spoken to the board, and while I've sent letters, it's a pleasure to be able to speak to you live, or at least virtually. While I haven't spoken to you in a year, I have been watching. So have teachers, school leaders, community members, various stakeholders, and most importantly, our students. Like the rest of the world, we've suffered through a pandemic that affects all of us. Additionally, we were hit with a cyber attack which crippled our system. Leadership is important at any time, but with twin crises, leadership is crucial. Peter Stark says that "in a moment of crisis, reactions set the leaders apart from the followers." I would ask the board members to reflect on their actions over the last year. Have you been cohesive, consistent leaders of our system and community that our system and community want and deserve? This is obviously a rhetorical question. Every member of this board is a talented and intelligent person, and there will certainly be instances of healthy disagreement of when there are clear and consistent signs of partisanship. And to the outside observer, it often comes across as personal dislike for one another in too many instances. Any team or board is only effective when the individual members work together for a common cause. And quite simply, that common cause is all of our students. I have great respect for each of you and the time, effort, and energy you put into your role as a member of this board. And I get no personal satisfaction in bringing this up tonight, but there is an elephant in the room. The elephant is that, is the unfortunate lack of respect and openness to others' opinions too often exhibited in the board's public meetings. This not only gets squarely in the way of leadership, the leadership we need and deserve, but sets a tremendously poor example for all our stakeholders, especially our students. So I'm asking each of you tonight to leave partisanship at the virtual door of every future meeting and work collaboratively and cooperatively with one another to lead us through these twin crises and into the future. And in your collective leadership role, I ask that you keep former NBA champion Chicago Bulls coach Phil Jackson's words in mind. The strength of the team is each individual member. The strength of each member is the team. On behalf of the system leaders who I represent, as well as all stakeholders, I thank you in advance for much-needed reflection and a reset as you work together to lead the Baltimore County Public Schools. Thank you, and have a great evening tonight and a great meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kira Joseph.
Greetings, Board President Scott, Vice President Hen, Dr. Williams, and Board members. For the past year, PACACY's focus has been on helping the Black and Brown school communities of color with basic needs such as food, shelter, and providing comfort to families of community members who have died from COVID-19. As the President of PACACY, we are calling attention to a phenomenon that is occurring in BCPS for the reopening plans in our Black and Brown school communities. Einstein said, "Not everything that can be counted counts, and not everything that counts can be counted." This means, in some situations, you must look at the qualitative reasonings and ask deeper questions. We have witnessed parent groups representing a few school communities monopolize news conferences, social media, and BCPS board meetings. These families provide one perspective on reopening. We ask the board to consider not making decisions on a single perspective representing one group of parents. We would like to know why the board is not paying more attention to your Black parents and parents of color on the issue of reopening. Why are more Black parents and parents of color opting to keep their children home on virtual learning than white parents? What are the COVID implications on our Black communities and communities of color and the schools that serve these communities? The New York Times wrote an article in February called "Missing in School Reopening", where they report approximately one-third of Black families are not returning their children to school. The article highlights some possible factors as to why Black families are not ready to have their children return. To further examine the same phenomenon that is occurring in Baltimore County Public Schools, we ask the board to complete the following action steps. Step one, look at the data of students who are returning by race, by school, and by zone. Two, conduct focused group discussions with Black parents and parents of color on their concerns with returning their children to school. And three, use the knowledge from step one and step two to inform decisions that support all students from all communities. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Danita Tolson.
Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. I am Dr. Danita Tolson, President of the Baltimore County Branch, NAACP. It appalled me that we are not talking also about student curriculum and more about the students. But I'm going to go on to say, this board selected Dr. Williams in July 2019, 18 months into his first year on the job, at a time when a new superintendent should be getting the lay of the land and learning his job. However, COVID-19, the pandemic, forced the closure of the Baltimore City Public Schools for the remainder of the year. Dr. Williams and his staff halted the in-person learning and switched to completely virtual learning. Eight months after beginning the pandemic, the district was blindsided with a ransomware attack that completely broke down the infrastructure of the district's operating system. After a closure of only two days, Dr. Williams and staff were able to resume virtual instruction. Four months after the ransomware attack and during a global pandemic, the district is now providing hybrid instruction for two days a week for in-person instruction, athletics for students with allowance for fans to watch, and vaccines for the Baltimore County teachers. During the last board meeting, several board members spoke about their constituents. Dr. Williams often speaks of family engagement. It leaves me to wonder, what are the board members doing to reach out to their constituents, including the NAACP? This board should be focused on real solutions during the most challenging times for all Baltimore County communities. That includes more discussions on the students and curriculum. So while making sports available to students with a full house of speculators, excuse me, viewers may be important for some, however, our constituents are also more concerned about balancing out the population with the available resources to decrease the overcrowding. There's a lack of equitable experiences for Black and Brown students and underperforming schools across the system, even in some wealthy communities in the county. With this important issues plaguing the district, I take notice of several policies on the agenda tonight's School Board meeting. All but one are in reference to the internal board policies. While this board is caught up in questioning every decision of the chairwoman, real issues are falling by the wayside and hurting our students and community. We look forward to continued conversations, including the equitable, yet balanced approach to a return to in-person learning-
Thank you.
-while maintaining a robust virtual component for those students.
Thank you, Dr. Tolson. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so that was our stakeholder groups. We've completed that. Next, we have general public comment. And our first speaker is Ms. Diana Bergman.
Good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Buenas tardes, señora Makita Scott, señora de facto Vice Chair Julie Hen, y Superintendent Dr. Williams, presidente de nuestra escuela. Hoy en mi canto lo que estoy escribiendo, lo que voy a decir hoy. I want you to listen to what I have to say today. I want this board to look at Policy 200. It's the basic board commitment of responsibility and duty for our school system. I've been observing this board for almost a decade now, our previous appointed board, and our current hybrid board. When you look on the BCPS website, one of the things that we have is a shrinkage of the About Me page. There's one sentence that says, "The Board of Education of Baltimore County is authorized by Maryland law to determine, with the advice of the county superintendent, the education policies of county school system." And I find it very hard to trust to believe that this current board is having such a difficult time respecting that. I have witnessed certain board members still make allegations against our staff. We're no longer looking at how we help our students. We're no longer putting our children first, our education system first, our teachers. When's the last time anybody asked our teachers what they needed? Did we, did we get input from everybody? Do we have meaningful two-way communication? Like it says in our other policy on how we engage the public, Community Relations, Policy 1270. We're supposed to have meaningful two-way communication, especially with our families that are part of Title I schools. So we have a lot of things to work on, and it's very hard when people's priorities are more worried about their activity on social media and whether or not they agree with an opinion. You want to talk about how this board does things? Well, you know what? Tonight, we still have a lot of testimony to do. What I keep seeing is BCPS's version of filibustering and people being upset about their First Amendment rights, but they didn't think about someone's First Amendment rights as a parent, or teacher, or staff, or even a student when they express their opinion about our education system. So a lot of these things, I just want you guys to know that you're on the record on how you vote. But what you use to choose, they matter. And at the end of the day, as public figures, guess what? You serve the taxpayers, of parents, of educators, of students.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman.
This is going to turn around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman. Next, we have Kate Kreider. Ms. Kreider?
Yes?
Okay, yep. You're next, Ms. Kreider.
All right, thank you.
Actually, you're on right now. You can go ahead with your statement.
Okay. Hello, thank you and good evening. I am a parent of two children. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you and good evening, everyone. I'm calling as a parent of two children. Okay, great. Thank you and good evening. I'm calling as a parent of two children, a kindergartner and a fourth grader. And I would just like to call so that I may share some feedback on our, on our families' virtual learning and hybrid learning.
Ms. Kreider, you should probably mute your background. We're hearing a little feedback. You should mute your computer, yeah. I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader, and I just want to share our family's feedback on the virtual and hybrid learning. My kindergartner has started the hybrid learning several weeks ago, and I just want to say that we are very happy with that process. We feel we've had great communication with the school. Uh, we feel we've had great communication with the school. Um, he's so happy to be back in school, and, um, my daughter should be starting in a couple of weeks as she's in fourth grade. And I just really wanted to share that, um, we felt the school administrators and the teachers are working so hard and, um, have been really clear, communicating all the information that we need and the safety procedures, and again, I just wanted to go ahead and share that with the board. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kreider. Next, we have Francine Chandler. So that ends our, um, general public comment. And next is public comment on policies. And our first speaker, and I believe our only speaker on policies, is Ms. Diana Bergman.
Hello, Madam Chair. Can you please, um, help me, um?
Yes.
Are we going to be speaking about every single policy or only the ones that were not removed?
Um, you, you can speak on whichever policies you would like. And what I was going to do was read the, um, policies you selected, the first one, and then just go in that order.
Okay, that will be helpful. Can you please, um, state the first policy?
Yes, I can. So the first one, um, that you selected is Policy 6002, Selection of Instructional Materials.
So, Policy 6002. I agree with Policy 6002. It should reflect of all student groups. We should also consider language of instructional materials and tools that reflect all groups of learners. Under Section 2, Definition, the language that needs to be added is enlarged print. It should be added as well as much-needed software for real-time interpretation for those with language barriers. This policy here, going over, and we've heard discussion regarding this policy, um, I'm going to pull it up here a second, pardon me, because it's a lot of policies, but I want to make sure I get a chance to speak on them. The policy for selection of instructional material and the added, the language that's being, um, added on here in bold, we, we have technology that is helping a lot of our students. Our students with a lot of challenges when it comes to learning, and we want to make sure that we don't limit ourselves on identifying resources or materials of exactly what they could access, what the combination is to learning on how our children learn today. Okay? Not how they learned 20 years ago, not how they learned 40 years ago. There is so much technology research that supports children and the way children learn, from audio support, different tools, and having the flexibility to be able to enter into contracts with vendors to support those new, new, unique ways of how we provide instruction. That's one of the things that I know a lot of people had noticed, is how do you get during COVID that you're doing virtual learning? How do you get support to instructional materials that are not available in your physical home because they're left behind in the classroom? And I think we should have some language to be able to identify that for students that are learning virtually, that they still have access to those learning instructional materials, regardless of what environment the student learner thrives in, whether it's hybrid, in-person, or, um, virtual. This is something that we, we think we need, we need to have that conversation. What is it that's not included in here that clearly identifies that it's not an issue, especially when it comes to enlarged print and, and braille for special education students? And advanced technology and software that we have for students with language barriers that we offer real-life, real interpretation of the student's native language so they can access the curriculum? So that, that's my concern with Policy 6002.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman. And next is Policy 8221, Board Officers' Chair, Vice Chair Duties.
Okay, so, this policy, I have, sorry. It pulled up the, the analysis, and I wanted to pull up the duties of the responsibility. I had mentioned in my testimony earlier, um, regarding the rules and the responsibility of all board members, not just the chair or the vice chair. And it pertains to how our students achieve, how we align and use the advice and guidance from our superintendent. And we define those guidelines of what the board actually believes. So when I'm looking at this policy and listening to board members in discussion regarding Policy 8221 and the rest of the policies discussed tonight, um, you know, it's one of those things where the, the chair, there have to be, you know, you put out one through seven of different things that are prioritized. I'm looking at this, and what does it have to do with instruction? Like, there should be some language added in there that the chair and the vice chair, um, agree with what we have outlined in Policy 200, some kind of guidelines of what we believe for our school system that has to do with education. You know, not just acting as, oh, I'm the board, you know, the board person and worry about if the board chair has too much power over the representation of the whole board. Like, there's nothing on there that's talking about that you're going to support our superintendent, you're going to support our education system, you're going to support our student and make sure that they're high achievers. Um, we have federal laws too that we have to apply to, to be able to receive federal funds when it comes to Title I, um, and stuff like that, the way we communicate with the public. So, yeah, those things that are added currently there are just procedures of what we expect the board chair to do, but we should have higher expectations that the belief of whoever takes the role of that chair and the vice chair is going to be driven towards improving the education experience of, of our students and our teachers. And I'm just heartbroken that it's, it's not added on there, and it shouldn't be number eight, it should be number one. That should be the number one priority, uh, of the board chair, is that we have some kind of language acknowledging that the board chair's responsibility and duty is to work hand-in-hand as a team, supporting our school system. And it's missing, it's missing here. It doesn't clearly define that. And to me, we should have the high expectation of clearly putting that out there, that education for our student achievement is a priority.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bergman. And the next one is Policy 8311, Meetings.
So this is regarding the meetings, and I know we heard a lot of discussion about the meetings for 8311. So I want to share a story. This hybrid board, I remember witnessing, um, one of the first, I think, I believe it was the second hybrid meeting in their term. And one of the first meetings that they had that I thought was completely disconnected is how they changed the way, um, agenda items are added to the agenda. It used to have to be like a majority vote with it, and it was changed, but it was changed without, without input from the public. We changed the policy, skipping input from the, from the public. Like, we were not engaged in that conversation, they didn't even consider that, it didn't even come up for discussion. It was just, you guys voted and you did that, and you didn't ask anything whatsoever, you did not ask a single stakeholders group, you did not ask a single student member, anybody, how we felt about that and the structure that. It was just automatically changed, deleted, without a chance. And, and then we have board members now talking about First Amendment rights. Well, what about open meeting apps? And how about following po, policy and procedures for how you set up your agendas to make sure that you create that communicate, um, community engagement like you're supposed to? So I, I want to see language on there and put back exactly, um, similar to what was before, and it goes on the record on how board members, um, commented regarding this Is my three minutes up for that policy?
No, you have a minute and 11 seconds.
Oh, okay. You know, we, we saw the same thing happen too, how it came up on the agenda to change, um, with the board in the past, to change if we had first reader, second reader, and third reader, like, you just like skipped a step in between. And it used to be like, it came up for first reader, and then it came up for second reader separately, and then the public got to comment, and you guys took it back and worked on it, and then it came out and it was amended. We don't even have that anymore because, again, that was taken away without consideration on how the public felt about it. You know? And your board members, your elected officials, your appointed officials, you are supposed to be serving us, the taxpayer, our educators, our students, that's what you, you swore an oath to, to, to do. So I, I don't understand how some members could sit there and talk about, oh, they object to something, they object to this and they object to that. This is putting some structure in place to help you guys get along, like, stop objecting to stuff. So that, you know, that's my input about that. I think I'm up.
Thank you. Yep. All right. And the next is Policy 8314. Ms. Bergman, that's meetings agenda.
8314, um, again, that has to do with, with what I said, that this board has a responsibility and supposed to serve us, the taxpayer, the public. When we are looking at these policies here on how you run your meetings and your agendas and how you set things up, you guys have to think about other things too. You know what, what really bugs me? I'm going to share with you guys what really, really bugs me, okay? It bugs me that, right now, we have vendors that we are in contract to actually help our children learn, waiting, waiting. While you guys debate back and forth on all this stuff and the public, and we get to see how everybody votes and stuff, we have people that are actually ready to work, have been working very hard for our kids and our educators, waiting to present their presentation. Okay? Why don't we allow those presentations to be put on the agenda ahead of time? Okay? I always thought it was very disrespectful in the past when everybody got to talk about whatever, and then we waited, everybody waited patiently to announce who we hired for our system. They had to wait there the whole frigging night, the whole night, waiting, and, you know, we didn't seem to appreciate someone that we just hired into Team BCPS, and we didn't consider their time and their time away from the family, we just kept them there. Which is what we're doing right now. You guys have been filibustering a lot of these meetings. Uh, we have our BCPS staff and a lot of people waiting around to give you a presentation that actually has to do with our children achieving their education experience and access to instruction and what we do during this whole difficult time of COVID. So we, we, we have these people waiting around and we don't prioritize them, and we should because they're prioritizing education of what this board is supposed to accomplish. So, again, you're on the record, you continue to be on the record, you shouldn't get upset when people point out things that you've done that's been on the record that goes against educating our children. That's going to continue to be an ongoing issue. Wherever I catch you, wherever I see you, I'm going to bring it up. You're on the record for doing X, Y, and Z. I want to know why you did, did that, and I want to know how you plan to improve our school system as a whole and make it about education and make it about our kids and our teachers. So, that's what I have to say about Policy, um, 8314, about these meeting agendas, that you guys should consider how well you treat others and, and our school system as a whole.
Thank you for that. Were you finished, Ms. Bergman, with 8314?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done with 8314.
Okay.
Let's go to the next one.
Okay. Well, actually, um, Ms. Brenda Pfeifer called in, and she would also like to speak on 8314. So I was going to let her speak on that, and then, then we'll go to the next one.
Oh, welcome.
Ms. Pfeifer?
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, good evening. I heard that there was already some robust discussion about this, um, by board members, so as I speak, I think you'll hear that I share some of their concerns, and, um, I'm pleased that this has been sent back to committee, but let me share what I have tonight. Um, I do have two main concerns that were brought up. The first is the requirement that motions, um, to the board meeting agenda be submitted 24 hours in advance. And we all know that things can happen up to the last minute, um, they can get, board members can get more information or speak with stakeholders. We even heard tonight that some board members are saying they don't even always get all the information they need for the board meeting within that 24-hour window. And so requiring this 24-hour advance notice to amend the agenda or to submit a motion to amend just seems like it's going to delay board, um, work even more, because if it's not received in time, the issue may have to wait until the next meeting or even later, potentially delaying some business by a couple of weeks, a month, maybe even more, depending on how long it takes. And I just feel like this would be a huge disservice to the students, to the teachers, and to the families of BCPS to keep delaying work that needs to be addressed. Um, I know that the board has operated without this requirement very well for a while, and I'm confident that, um, the chair could continue to take board motions in at the time and run the meeting smoothly. So I feel like this change to Policy 8314 is unnecessary, and it could even hinder the work of the board. Uh, the other amendment to this policy that was also discussed tonight was changing the number of required votes to amend a board meeting agenda from the current requirement of a majority to the proposed requirement of a unanimous vote. Um, for one, this is just really not consistent with other board action. Other work of the board requires a majority of vote, and it doesn't make sense to require a unanimous vote simply to amend a board meeting agenda while the other important work of the board requires only a majority of members to be in agreement. Uh, also, any single member of this board really would have the power to block certain action simply by not voting for an amendment on the agenda, even if all other 11 members of the board agree on that amendment. Think about that. 11 members are in agreement, one member doesn't agree, and that member can just block the action by not getting something on the agenda. This really has the potential to cause a serious roadblock in board action. Um, and ultimately, the potential exists that once the agenda is set by the chair and the superintendent, it would become all but impossible for the agenda to ever be changed, effectively blocking certain items from ever being addressed. So I believe that these changes could have a serious negative impact on the board's ability to get needed items on the agenda and to get work done. So I don't believe that either of these changes to Policy 8314 are in the best interest of the board or the best interest of the students and teachers and families that they represent. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Pfeifer, next, um, we go back to Ms. Bergman, and she's going to make a comment on Board Policy 8360 Ethics Code, uh, Ethics Code, um, applicability and definitions. Go ahead, Ms. Bergman.
Hi, I'm here to speak about Policy 8360. First, I would like to start off by saying, did you guys know, and I don't know if anybody has brought this up, but this is something I noticed, the ethic review panel, they're selected by the Board of Ed. And I'm just here wondering, if the Board of Ed has power to elect the ethic review panel, isn't that a conflict of interest when we're looking at stuff? You know, just let that set in for a minute, because usually when we have people reviewing things like that, violations or whatever the case is, that's usually a third-party entity outside. Okay? So there's no biased decision made or anything. But the ethic review panel that reviews stuff for Baltimore County's Board of Ed, okay, it is selected by appointment of board members. They pick those five people, and I don't think it should be five. I think it should be seven, at least to have proper representation of geographic, um, of the county as a whole, we're a big county. So here on Section 2 on Destination B, there's new language added, and there's language being deleted. The deleted language says person engaged in business, whether profit or nonprofit, regardless of form. And here's the thing, if this, if this is an issue regarding profit versus nonprofit, why are we just going with the operation for profit? There's a lot of companies out there that we want to question, um, what their true intent is, okay? Do we have to remind everybody of what happened with, um, everybody with all these elite Ivy schools and stuff, of the rich and famous getting prioritized for colleges and all that conflict of interest that happen all over the place? Um, we don't want to get ourselves in that mess. We already have a mess that we still haven't figured out how to resolve, so we shouldn't have figured out how to resolve, so we shouldn't have any conflict of interest, whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit. I think the, the language needs to be there, that we should make sure that we're not entering into any kind of conflict of interest when it comes to these, um, contributions and stuff. Then it talks about more contributions, and that's another thing I think that needs to happen, you know? I'll talk about that in the social media policy when it comes to other businesses too, because some board members also have other, um, private little entities of profits and stuff like that. So, um, they should be able to identify what that business is ahead of time and make sure that they're not trying to promote any kind of business, um, with our school system to sell, you know, pig soap or whatever it is they wanna sell, or, or books or whatever. So we, we need to think about that stuff here, and, and look at the makeup of this ethic review panel too, because I don't, I don't think it's right that the board gets to pick who investigates them if they do ethic violations. I mean, one is it fair to investigate?
Thank you, Ms.
That's not fair, that's not right.
Ms. Bergman, thank you, that was the time for that. Okay, looks like we were getting some feedback, thank you. Okay, the next one you have, Ms. Bergman, is Policy eighty-three sixty-one, Ethics Code Statement of Purpose and Policy.
Okay, so eighty-three sixty-one.
Yes.
Another Ethics Code Statement for Purpose of the Policy. Pretty much it says, um, the same, there's little details I've noticed, deleting grammar, you know, someone's editing the grammar of the policy. Overall, it kinda looks at the recommended behaviors for, um, members of the school board, candidates and members of the school board and superintendent employees, each of these individuals shall be subject to the Ethics Code, okay? So this, this policy right here, eighty-three sixty-one, established, uh, you know, behavior-wise of everybody, okay? Which is, which is a thing I hear a lot about teachers, right? You know, and you guys talked a little bit about this, not too much about this, but a little bit about it. Why doesn't the board are held to the same standards of expectations about their behaviors, regardless if it's on social media or not? You know, out and about, whatever they do, we, we have the same expectations out of our teachers, we actually have too much expectations out of our teachers, they're supposed to do everything, like, uh, like Inspector Gadget, remember that guy? So it's the same thing for, for board, like ethically, shouldn't we have high expectations of our board members and their behaviors? Shouldn't we make sure that board members are being transparent, that they're following procedures and the handbook, that they're not going around behind people's back lobbying other lawmakers without telling anybody, because that's not cool, no, that's not cool at all. But we've had some board members that have actually, um, you know, gone to, to, to lawmakers and said, we want this, we want this, and the poor legislative committee chair has no idea that X, Y members went to go lobby our, our lawmakers. So that type of behavior unacceptable, you know better, you know? But I think it, it outlines it here, maybe it needs to be more specific in Policy eighty-three sixty-one, maybe that will be helpful. So that, that, that's my two cents regarding Policy eighty-three sixty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman, next is, uh, Policy eighty-three sixty-two, Ethics Code Gifts.
Oh, this is a big one here, mhm, I see some added language here. Oh man, these gifts, let me tell you, when it comes to some of our board members, I don't think people think before they speak or write sometimes, because I honestly don't think that because you made a mistake, and maybe you know you made a mistake, you had to hit the reset button, I don't think it's right that you offer somebody some kind of gift. To me, that's like a bribe, okay? You don't bribe people to hush up, hush, hush up, because you know you made a mistake and you don't want anybody else to find out. So we have added language here regarding economic value, regardless of the form, without adequate and lawful consideration. Gift does not include contribution as defined in the election law article. Oh, see, that grabs my attention, antidote code of Maryland or any other provision of state or law. So what makes it so special that the same standard set by Maryland law doesn't apply to you, board members, you're elected officials, some of you are? That doesn't seem fair. You have to run a campaign and everything, who's giving you what or what promises? And how does that impact our children? Does that mean that some kids are getting a, a better deal with their education because a certain gift are being contributed by X, Y, and Z? Or some kids are being left without? We're not doing that anymore, the has and the have-not argument, that is getting so old, it is getting so old, it's last century old, okay? Because we passed the blueprint, I remember when you guys voted in support of the blueprint, remember that? And it was supposed to be a world-class education for everybody, and that money's supposed to be rolling out? We're not doing favoritism here, we're not adding new, um, elite companies that have a history of doing bad business when it comes to education, because they've never actually taught children, they're just in it for money. So let's talk about that, if you wanna talk about that, but yeah, we have to pay attention to this policy here and outline, um, and we should meet the, the requirements with this gift. Like, we can't be gifting people anything, you know, um, that, that's expensive, that's not cool, like, you know, it just, it's not happening, it's not happening, it shouldn't happen, you guys have to have a conversation about this, because it's not cool, no, no, no. All right, let's go on to the next policy.
Okay, thank you, the next policy is eighty-three sixty-three, Ethics Code Conflict of Interest, Prohibited Conduct.
Oh, this conflict of interest, let me tell you, with technology that we have nowadays, okay? There is absolutely no reason, no excuse that we can have a dashboard, a dashboard that gives us like automatic, you know, information, you know? We end up having like this whole thing here, right, where, um, board members have to fill out their financial disclosure forms, okay? And not only do they have to fill out their financial disclosure forms, they also have to disclose if there could be any potential of conflict of interest. Remember that meeting that we had, and somebody tried to make a motion about a stakeholder group being added in the middle of public comments without following actually policy and procedures of BCPS, okay? That's a big no-no, that's a big conflict of interest. If a lobbyist group is out there acting and behaving like a lobbyist group, they must register. Not only do they must register, if a board member has contribute to that lobbyist group, they must disclose it in a financial, financial, um, disclosure form. And me, as a public member, uh, it takes forever to get that feedback, okay? You have to put in a mail, print out the paper, you know, US Postal Service, it ain't running that quick like it used to, so we have to send that out and then wait forever to then look at those financial disclosures and, and this whole time, we could use technology, put it out there, so we know which lobbyist group has to register, and we could put it out there, you know, which board members, we have to watch to make sure that they recuse themselves from a vote or any action on the board, because they contribute financially to, to, to a lobbyist group. So that's a conflict of interest, there's other conflicts of interest too. Like, if you have a, a different business as a board member, you know what, you should report that you have another business, and you should not be selling to our teachers or, or principals or anybody about your, your private little business, okay? You can't be selling books or, or, or travel deals, you know, or, or any pig soap, that's not happening, that's a conflict of interest, okay? And the pig soap, I don't have nothing against pigs, I like pigs, okay? I like pigs. But the pig soap honestly is a little bit like overbite, but it has nothing to do with education, nothing to do at all with education. So we have to pay attention to these companies and make sure that they're not over here, you know, a conflict of interest with our board members, because you're supposed to be focused about the kids, focused about the kids, not about all the special little gifts and in these conflict of interest. So that's what I have to say about Policy eighty-three sixty-three, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman, next is Policy eighty-three sixty-four, Ethics Code Financial Disclosure Statements.
The financial disclosure statement, let me tell you, I ran out of ink, I had to go to Walmart to buy some more ink for my printer, because you have to print out the, the form that's on BCPS. And, you know, I wanna give a, a shout-out to our technology department, because let me tell you, they've gotten some of those forms back up, those forms are very important, okay? So you have to sit here and print these out, and again, I don't see no language of advancing, advancing this stuff. I saw that you guys added a bunch of names, it says here, Section B, this policy applies to all Baltimore County School BCPS, utility and, uh, employees with the following job titles, administrator, administrator chief, auditor, assistant superintendent, um, audit officer. I'm looking at this, um, where's the board members, like, board members, you're not on here? Like, oh, wait, designated employees by the board, no, where did our board members go, are they on here? Hey, who, who took the board members out? Wait, you know what, we need to add the board members. Oh, wait, it's up here, except the student board members, okay? So student board member doesn't get all mixed up in this mix, but the policy applies to our board members, is in the very top front, but now they added everybody else to the party. So again, an ethic review panel to look at this and investigate this, selected by who? No, not an outsider, selected by the Board of Ed, the current Board of Ed members. Now, wouldn't one think that this could go very wrong, very south, very quick? Because this right here could be used as retaliation against our administrator, assistant chief auditor, our assistant superintendent, our audit manager, our chief, our community superintendent, the comptroller, we have a comptroller in BCPS? Okay, I guess we have a comptroller in BCPS, the coordinator, the director, the executive director, the physical officer, there's a whole bunch of people, this manager, even the minor, the minority business enterprise consultant, um, whatever, but you guys are here, again, changing these ethical policies, and the big conflict of interest is that the ethic review panel is appointed by the board member, and it should be an outside party investigating these allegations and questions that people have. So that's my take on Policy eighty-three sixty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman, next is Policy eighty-three sixty-five, Ethics Code Lobbying.
Oh man, ethics code and lobby, I had an issue with, you know how intense this is? Let me tell you, I was reading this policy, look at that, Pursuit of the Board Education Policy eighty-three sixty-five, that's the registration form, where's the policy here? Oh, no, that's the analyst report. Here's the, nope, that's the report page again, here's the policy draft. So we have a policy statement, and it's going over, they're changing some numbers from three to two, uh, from four to three, and it talks about the ethic review panels. And it defines lobbying, okay? Communication in the presence of a member of the school board or any school official with intent to influence any official action of that member of the school board or officer and spending over $25 for food, entertainment, or other gifts during the calendar year in connection with the communication or intent to influence or, okay? Number two, engaging in activities having the express, um, express purpose of soliciting others to communicate. Again, it goes back to that meeting we had with the lobbyist group that failed to register, I couldn't find them registered to anybody, I watched their group behave as a lobbyist group in Annapolis. Yeah, they did, they actually were asking for vouchers, okay, vouchers? They were asking for money to have online learning, okay, without any state oversight. We're not doing that, not happening, okay? The Maryland Blueprint, we worked really hard, we got our board supporting Maryland Blueprint since 2016, before we even knew what we were doing to figure that out. We're not gonna have these little groups come out of nowhere that don't wanna follow the rules, go there and influence board members, lawmakers, whoever the case is, without following procedures, without registering, and, and feeding people, that's not cool, okay? They have to register, they have to communicate that, we should be able to see what lobbyist group are doing, hello, dashboard, that's the new thing now, okay? We're supposed to have dashboards, we have technology, okay? Board docs, to me, is a little bit outdated, it gets a little frustrated, I know it gets a little frustrated for everybody else too, it should be more interactive, more easy to search, and we should be able to see the activity reports too, of the lobbyist group, of who they talk to and when, okay? We should be able to know that, you know, we have this, um, privacy information app where we request information and stuff, like the lobbyist group, they have to file, and it should be a penalty if they don't file.
Time, Ms. Bergman, for that one, thank you. So the next one is Ethics Code, excuse me, eighty-three sixty-six, Ethics Code, Ethics Review Panel.
Okay, see, this is the ethics review panel that I was talking about earlier, that I kept mentioning, that I think is a conflict of interest policy statement. There is an ethics review panel of the Baltimore County Public School BCPS that consists of five appointed by the Board of Education of Baltimore County, okay? This is what I call investigating yourself on issues, okay? That's not a real investigation when you investigate yourself, it is not a real investigation when you appoint the person investigating you, what kind of investigation is that? I mean, talk to any professional investigator, you know what, maybe we should talk to our, um, new state inspector general, let's call Richard up and ask him if that's a conflict of interest. And five members, um, appointed, why five? Why five, we have seven districts, okay? Baltimore County is very huge, it's very big, okay? How do we know that in this language, we're not picking five people that live in the same area of Baltimore County? How is that fair? Didn't you hear testimony from everybody else, that the west side of Baltimore County, things aren't going as peachy and as great as it is for other people? So we should have at least opportunity to have a, a completely different process of how we select our ethic review panel. It has to be fair, I don't think the board should be appointed, I don't think, you know, the school system should be appointing us either, um, maybe let's call, I don't know, our board Johnny O, the county inspector, let's ask him how he could help, because I know he said to me a bunch of times before, he's happy to help when it comes to dashboards and stuff. So why not have a panel that represents all of Baltimore County, that has experience, and that doesn't have any ties, any ties and cannot be swayed or, um, you know, feel bad about saying something because so-and-so friend got them on the ethics review panel, you know? So that's kind of my issue with, with this whole thing, like, it is really long, have you guys read some of this stuff on Policy eighty-three sixty-six? Have you read all the stuff regarding the internal operations, the ethical codes? It gets boring unless you're a policy nerd and you like reading policy, it's, it's, you know, it's overwhelming. But the time, that's another thing, they're able to serve two five-year terms, two five-year terms, until the, another person comes up. Like, that is a long time to be there, that's, that's five years is a long-term term. I don't think there should be term limits really, you know what? Maybe they should have a two-year term and no term limit, you know? And it, it sounds very silly, like, you know, Congress doesn't have term limits, a lot of people think they should, but they don't, but you get experience. So you pay attention to a lot of these little boards that people don't know what they do, but they do really big things for our school system, they do some major investigations, some major opinions that they form and stuff, and you have to pay attention to what happens.
Okay.
And how we select it.
Time, thank you, Ms. Bergman. So the net, the last policy you had on here is Policy eighty-six zero-one, Use of Social Media.
Okay, so this is a big one, the social media policy, okay? The inspector general wrote not one, but two, two letters, two letters to this board, because we have board members going wild, okay? Not cool, not cool to have board members going wild, okay? Not cool to go on the record and say that you're against something that we need. We need this, the reason why we need this, to have the social media policy, so this board could move forward and actually educate and help our students and teachers. That is why we need the social media policy. There's been too much nonsense on social media, okay? Hiding, deleting, comments, muting people, just because you don't like their opinion, okay? That is unacceptable, okay? Then you wanna talk about, oh, First Amendment rights, what about people's First Amendment rights when you delete their comments and the way they express themselves about their edu- And the way they express themselves about their education? And going back to that policy twelve-seventy about community engagement, okay? Community engagement. How do you have meaningful two-way communication if you've muted or deleted or blocked somebody? How is that communication meaningful with a parent, with a student, with an educator? Like, shame on you for saying elsewhere. This is the type of thing that we need. Unfortunately, we need and we must have it. Because they, it, it has violated the First Amendment rights. Not to the board member, but to the public. The public that you're supposed to serve. We, the people that you're supposed to help, okay? We expect this board to support our superintendent. You guys hired him. Work with him, communicate, have meaningful two-way communication with him in this team, okay? Stop cutting stuff. And, and, and we barely have any more money. Did you see the audit compared to our nearby jurisdiction? We barely have any more money. What else are you going to cut? How is that helping our students and teachers get educated in Baltimore County? Okay? While your focus, instead of addressing how we barely have enough money to educate everybody, okay? Your focus is on social media nonsense, okay? I've seen some board members promote their personal little business on their social media platform. That's a big no-no, you should not do that. So the social media policy, you know what we need to do also? That's not added on here, no one's brought up? We need to add some kind of register system. A way that board members have to register with social media platform they are using. So our school systems identify that platform has been registered. And you must also register whatever small business that you have to make sure that you are not promoting financial gain using your board member platform, okay? Nobody has talked about that.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman.
We definitely should.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman, that's time. So, um, we also, we also have, um, Ms. Brenda.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bergman. Um, now we have Brenda Pfeiffer, who would like to speak on eighty-six zero-one, use of social media as well.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we know that the stated purpose of this new social media policy is to lay out standards for board members when using social media and other online platforms, and to define the potential consequences if those standards are violated. Um, I am not speaking tonight to argue for or against having a social media policy in, in general. However, I do believe that this particular policy is simply not a good policy, and it needs to be rewritten, so I'm glad that it was sent back to committee tonight. Uh, generally, I just think that the language in this policy is simply too vague to be effective. For example, the policy states that board members should always conduct themselves online in a manner that reflects well of the board and the school system. Um, but I'm wondering how this will be interpreted? Does a board member have a right to respectfully disagree with the school system? Or could that be interpreted as not reflecting well of the school system? It's a little unclear from reading the policy. Also, the policy prohibits board members from deliberating board business on any online platform. But what does that mean? I listened to the policy review committee meeting in which the policy was discussed. And our student board member asked some very good questions, clarifying questions about what might count as deliberating board business online. But in that meeting, he really wasn't able to get clear answers to those questions. So how is a board member to know whether he or she is deliberating board business online or simply participating in healthy and robust discussions about the school system? So again, language is just too vague to really be effectively implemented. If there's going to be a policy governing the use of social media and online platforms, it must be very clear. One of the potential consequences listed for violating this policy is being removed from committee assignments where board members do much of their work. So board members must be completely clear about what is being expected of them when such serious consequences are at stake. If I were a board member, I'd be very concerned about this policy as it is written now. It's too vague to be able to clearly identify when I was in compliance with the policy or not. And I'd always be concerned that something I'm saying on social media could be interpreted as being in violation of the policy. And this concern would likely limit my posts and my interactions online for fear of violating this nebulous policy. Social media and other online platforms are among the most common ways that people interact and debate current issues these days. If an overly broad and vague policy like this one leads to board members limiting their social media interactions, then it could have a significant negative impact on their engagement with the very stakeholders that they represent. So if the board does choose to go forward to have a social media policy, which I believe it will, it needs much clearer language so that all parties will know with certainty if and when violations occur. Um, so again, this policy is just too vague, and I'm grateful that it's been sent back to committee to be revised. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that ends our, um, public comment on policies. The next.
Not there. Pardon me. I understand.
I'm sorry, could you identify who is speaking?
Oh, Ms. Hen.
Yes, Ms. Hen.
I believe there's somebody, um, who has called in, who signed up to speak to policies that has not been acknowledged.
And how would you know this? Where did that, because I have a list here of everyone who signed up.
Would you please, um, check with Ms. Gover?
Ms. Gover shaking her head, no, there is no one. There's, is there somebody online waiting? Or on the phone?
Ms. Pfeiffer was the last one.
Yeah, Ms., um, Ms. Goverset, Ms. Pfeiffer was the last one. Yep, we just double-checked. All right, so the next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session. And for that, I call on Mr. Mercedes.
Good evening, Ms. Scott. Nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mercedes. The next item on the agenda is the reopening of schools. And for that, I call on Dr. Williams.
So, good evening, Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, and members of the Board of Education. Tonight, we, the design team and I, will provide an update regarding our reopening. Uh, we will discuss certain topics such as our phase and approach, our data related to the virtual versus hybrid learning, extracurricular activities, CDC guidelines, an overview of our pacing and our partnership with our health experts or our health advisory. Next slide, please. Phase one and phase two began on March first. We had students attending public, our public separate day schools and our preschool through grade two. On March fifteenth, in grades three to twelve, students receiving special education services provided primarily outside of general education had an opportunity to return in a hybrid model. Additionally, our high school students in select C T E programs returned so they could be afforded hands-on opportunities tied to credentialing. Once again, we need to highlight the work of our school-based staff servicing students and the collaboration that has taken place across schools and offices in order to welcome back our students. Our administrators had partnered across schools within and across feeders to share best practices. Teachers volunteered to return early so they could explore and learn how to implement concurrent instruction. Office support staff worked tirelessly to assist with ensuring families with transportation information and that student information transferred into our new student information system. There had been incredible S E L supports provided to our students as they return. Teachers and paraeducators are implementing curriculum in meetings to reunite students as communities. And our P P Ws and social workers are assisting schools with outreach to our students and families. Our schools are fostering community partnerships to provide wraparound services to our families. Two schools have partnered with LEAF, the Latino Education Achievement Fund, to conduct workshops for our families regarding hybrid learning. Central office leaders participated in a Facebook Live session on Somos Baltimore Latinos and answered questions regarding hybrid learning. Yesterday, March twenty-second, we had welcomed back all of our remaining staff to our schools. Our leaders, along with our office professionals and building service workers, have done a phenomenal job preparing for their return. Additionally, our sixth and ninth graders entered their middle and high schools for the first time this year. We are thrilled that we were able to offer them this week to be with staff and in their buildings ahead of the return of upper grades. Research has indicated how important it is to provide differentiated support to students in transitional years. Next slide, please. Want to turn it over to Dr. Logan Washington at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Williams. The graph displays, um, the total percentage of students and families opting for in-person hybrid instruction and the percentage of students and family, families opting for virtual instruction district-wide in phases one and phase two. So you see the two percentages outlined on the slide. With blue representing, the darker blue representing our students that are remaining virtual district-wide in phase one and phase two, and the lighter blue teal color representing our students that are opting for virtual. Next slide, please. This graph shows that same information, but by zone. So you have the east zone, central zone, and the west zone. Next slide, please. This graph shows the students returning in phases one and two by race. So you, the one, the one graph displays the data with in-person hybrid learning and the other graph, virtual learning. At this time, I'm going to pass the conversation to Ms. Byers, who will continue.
So, good evening, Chairman Scott and members of the board. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Logan Washington for being us, uh, being with us this evening. This data that has just been shared with you had previously been shared with our equity committee. Um, however, we felt it was really important to share it with the full board. And as Dr. Logan Washington explained, the data does reflect, um, phases one and two. Um, Dr. Boswell McComas and Dr. Logan Washington do plan to share data for our subsequent phases in future equity committee meetings. So we do want to just pause here for a moment. And my colleagues, Dr. Jones, Dr. Roberts, and I would just like to share how this data that's been presented compares to what we're seeing when we are in our schools. So, um, as the community superintendent for the central zone, I can share that in my visits to my schools, the reality of what I'm witnessing in my schools is very much aligned to the data that you just looked at when we, um, compare who has opted into a hybrid, uh, learning pathway versus who has opted into a virtual learning pathway. Many of our Baltimore County public schools that are predominantly made up of white students have a large percentages of students whose families have opted into hybrid learning. Um, this is in contrast to what is observed in our schools that are not comprised of predominantly white students. At this time, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Jones to share a little bit about what she's seen as the community superintendent in the west zone.
Thank you, Ms. Byers, and good, good evening. These data and the pandemic itself have created another opportunity to listen, learn, and respond to what is actually happening in the Lansdowne area, Weston Tech, Catonsville, Woodlawn, Milford Mill area, and within the Randalls Town and Newtown communities. Those communities at large represent our west zone. As I visit schools and speak to principals and teachers and support staff in the west zone, I hear the anecdotes, tragic losses during the coronavirus pandemic that understandably have impacted current choices. To that end, as west zone leaders, we will not alienate our black and brown families. We will not judge, ignore, or overlook families that also deserve a high-quality education. We must value the decisions of the families that remain in remote learning, in a remote learning environment, as much as we value those that choose to participate in in-person learning. Every student, every family, every school community matters. Again, the west zone data is compelling. Principals, teachers, and staff, thank you for your continued advocacy. We will remain focused on our moral imperative and obligation to provide a high-quality education to all students, virtual and in-person. Our data tells us that we have to do that. Virtual and in-person learning is going to be important in our reopening discussions and in our reopening planning moving forward. I'll turn it over to, now to Dr. Roberts. Dr. Roberts?
Great, thank you, Dr. Jones, and good evening, board members and Dr. Williams. I wanted to really focus my comments on our, as you heard referenced earlier for some of our community stakeholders, on our Latino students, particularly in the southeast area. So as the east zone community superintendent, my zone of schools encompasses from Perry Hall South through Essex into Dundalk and in Edgemere, and a growing population of our Latino students and are in these areas. So when talking with my principals in the east zone, one of the things that they are doing in the work, the critical work that they're doing, is reaching out to this particular community to assess their needs and assess their wants in terms of a virtual and/or an in-person environment. And what we're hearing from this community, not just from the parents sharing with, with their principals, but in opportunities that I've had and others like Dr. Boswell McComas and others of us have spoken directly with community members in our Latino community, is they have concerns. They have concerns around, um, not the safety of their children within the school, but in the community, the community spread, and wanting to keep their children virtual, um, for a little bit longer. So with that, our principals are focused on providing, as Dr. Jones mentioned, really a high-quality education, virtual education for our students, as well as an in-person education for our students, because the impact on our black and brown students, um, is real in terms of their willingness to come back and working with our schools to do so. So we wanted to just reiterate these points and add some context to these slides for the board and for the community. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Byers with some concluding comments and to move forward in the presentation.
So, thank you, Dr. Roberts. I would like to conclude this portion of our update by just providing some additional important context to these data that echoes some of what you've already heard this evening from our stakeholders. Our principals across all of our one hundred seventy-five school centers and programs have done an incredible job of outreach to their families in order to ascertain the choices of our families. They've worked collaboratively with our P P Ws, our social workers, our, um, E S L office, and translators to reach our families. They've hosted countless parent evenings. They've, um, used technology to provide information and to inform their parents of what return in a hybrid setting could look like. They've also even done individual Facebook Live tours with families. I share all of that because it is important to note that this data reflects the informed choices of our families. Students and families who are opting into a virtual pathway are doing so based on information that they have received and for reasons that reflect what is in the best interest of the student and the family. As Dr. Jones explained, that choice is, and it will continue to be respected by our staff inside and outside of the schoolhouse. And that respect is reflected in our ongoing plans. At this time, we are going to continue with our re-entry update, and we are going to shift gears a little bit to, um, talk about our students. So, uh, Mr. Corns, if you could please advance to the next slide. So we do want to, um, provide an update on in-person, um, extracurricular activities. The full board received information today, as did our principals. Um, as you are all aware, our extracurricular activities include both programs and clubs that enhance our students' academic program. Um, B C P S provides these extracurricular activities in all of our elementary, our middle, and our high schools. So examples of our clubs include the chess club, our student government associations, robotics. And then we also have programs like our honor societies, performing arts groups, and fine arts groups. It is important to note that all of these activities have taken place in our schools since the beginning of the school year in a virtual environment. Our teachers, our staff, our para-professionals who sponsor these activities have done a remarkable job engaging students in the virtual setting, and they've been incredibly creative. I, um, I've had the privilege of attending virtual plays, virtual performances, virtual art shows. So I just want to commend the job and the creativity of our staff. Our students will have the opportunity to participate in these activities in an in-person setting beginning on April twelfth. Um, after we've received input from our school-based leaders, we did recognize that this timeline will allow our teachers and our support staff who sponsor these activities, as well as our students, to be able to become. our students, to be able to become re-acclimated to the in-person environment. If a teacher or a parent educator or a staff member cannot sponsor an activity in a face-to-face setting, our school leaders will have the opportunity and the flexibility to explore alternatives and to make adjustments accordingly. Virtual extracurriculars have enabled students to stay connected to their school communities since the fall. Consequently, our in-person activities will be offered in a concurrent learning model so that our students, who have opted to remain virtual for very good reasons, may still participate. We want to ensure that we are servicing all of our students and not creating greater gaps between our white students and our students of color. Finally, staff in consultation with our high school leaders and the Office of Health Services will be providing a plan and a guidance document that is related to senior activities. This plan and guidance document will be shared with our principals this week. So speaking of our seniors, at this time, I would ask Mr. Corns to advance the slide, and I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Zarchin, who will provide an update on graduation. Dr. Zarchin?
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Staff continue to plan for modified in-person graduation ceremonies. Information regarding proposed venues and details about health and safety protocols are forthcoming. We are currently waiting for a decision from Towson University regarding the availability of SECU arena. In the event that the Towson SECU arena is not available, a work group is exploring alternative outdoor venues across Baltimore County. Health and safety considerations, both CDC and local, will guide our plans for modified ceremonies. Next slide, please. So last Friday, the CDC released updated guidance. As you can see, there are some changes. We've moved to three feet of social distancing in classrooms in our elementary schools or in elementary schools is the guidance, where mask use is universal regardless of community transmission. The guidance provided by CDC shares that middle and high schools where mask use is universal unless community transmission is high and unless students and teachers change classes. Six feet of social distancing remains in the guidance between adults in common areas, including during meals, outside of the classroom, and increased exaltation, the signing bands and sports, where they're more active, the breathing may be more vigorous, that is still six feet of social distancing. So our secondary students change classes, so we would not be able to adopt the three feet of social distancing in middle and high schools. We expect the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland State Department of Education to review this guidance in upcoming weeks. Currently, Maryland requires schools to provide six feet of social distancing to the extent possible. The CDC core principles for social distancing between students in classrooms includes elementary schools. As I mentioned earlier, students should be at least three feet apart. The guidance, as I mentioned, in middle and high schools can be three feet in areas of low, moderate, or substantial community transmission. In areas of high community transmission, middle and high school students should be six feet apart if cohorting is not possible. As I mentioned earlier, our students change classes in middle school and high school so that cohorting is not in place. Next slide, please. As we charter path for our return to full in-person learning, we will gradually add additional layers of groups and activities in a thoughtful way, all along providing safety for students and staff while making progress towards the resumption of full in-person learning. This approach mirrors the layered approach we use with the mitigation strategies. At this time, many unknowns remain on the path. With the virus levels remaining high, will they remain stable or drop in the next few weeks? Another question is, will the state sanction CDC guidelines on social distancing in school? We have yet to see that. What we are showing here is a roadmap for the next few months that will move us towards full in-person learning. You can see that in April, two things will be happening. Each week, we will add a new group, new programming, and a higher-risk activity, all the while maintaining strict mitigation measures and monitoring for spread. We expect that we will see minimal transmission of COVID in schools, and that will be safely expanded as far as programming for students in the hybrid environment. Next, as we look towards May, we will seek to increase the number of days that students will be in school. We will begin with our elementary learners in accordance with what we know about lowest spread for this group, with the target of elementary students being able to attend four days a week by early May. We have some additional operational challenges to address in April. For example, what is the impact of the increased elementary class size on transportation? How will we provide the recommended six feet of social distancing during lunch and when students are not masked? Our design team operations work group has been assigned the task of providing recommended strategies and solutions for these issues. Next slide, please. The timeline to provide all students with the opportunity to return to in-person learning enables us to learn what's working and identify variables that need to be addressed as we increase the number of students in schools. That learning process and the evaluation along the way is incredibly important. We are purposely being conservative as transmission rates have been rising so we can build on successes and strengthen confidence and trust across stakeholders. We are both energized and excited about progress towards having students back in schools five days a week, and we understand that we will need to address those who are ready for a full return now and those who are uncomfortable about the risks associated with the path we are currently on. We believe that our current path will build trust and confidence in our return to in-person learning. In a meeting with the CDC senior scientist and epidemiologist, we received positive feedback on a return to in-person learning. In the meeting, we were encouraged to walk, then run, and avoid putting the cart before the horse, which would leave us forced to revert back. The CDC doctor encouraged us to maintain a deliberate pace. Yesterday, in our second meeting with our health advisory experts from Johns Hopkins and the University of Maryland, we had an opportunity to share our plan and receive guidance on our plan and pace towards a full return to in-person learning. In the meeting, it was reinforced that with cohorts, we can put more students back in schools. Once again, we were encouraged to continue moving towards bringing more students back at a purposeful pace while monitoring transmission in schools. A key takeaway from the meeting was to move with a focus on quality improvement. We were encouraged to monitor variables as we expand in-person learning and avoid moving at a pace that would prevent us from having to walk back our return. That would happen or could happen if our pace exceeds our ability to learn and adapt to challenges. The JHU and University of Maryland doctors emphasized that the risk of secondary transmission increases with age. As a result, we will focus our early expansion for elementary schools and then include middle schools and high schools. We will continue to monitor our metrics and build upon our mitigation practices as we deliberately and safely progress towards a return to in-person learning for all five days a week. It is our goal to be fully open and keep the schools fully open. To that end, we are committed to building on successes and learning so students receive the benefits of in-person learning without disruptions or returns back to virtual. Next slide, please. So we are extremely thankful for the guidance and support that we have received from local and national experts. Our most recent advisors are working with us to support the school system as a result of the Baltimore County government's involvement and partnership with our work. Experts in our health advisory are from the Johns Hopkins Consortium for Schools-Based Health and the University of Maryland School of Medicine. We have continued to work with Dr. Branch on at least a weekly basis, and we are regularly in contact with him about many issues that come up and opportunities for vaccines for our staff throughout BCPS. We also have a COVID task force that meets weekly that includes Dr. Chen from the Department of Health in Baltimore County. Our design team and work groups continue to focus on opportunities to expand in-person learning, and as I mentioned, our new advisory health group has been a great asset as well. Dr. Williams, in his weekly meetings with superintendents, hears from the Maryland Department of Health as well as MSD. At this time, I will turn to Dr. McComas to continue the presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Corns, if you could please advance the slide. I'm here to provide you just a reiteration of our update for athletics. As all of you know by now, we have expanded our spectators for our athletic games. It's typically three spectators per student athlete, and of course, that can take us up to crowds approximately 360 persons or so. We certainly need to make adjustments for older and smaller facilities that may not accommodate such large crowds, keeping in mind that spectators still need to maintain six feet distance between the groups that are there. And we are continuing to use our paperless ticketing system, Ticket Spicket, as a way of helping to manage that as well as to support us if and when contact tracing is necessary. Again, safety protocols remain in effect, as Dr. Zarchin talked about, wearing masks, maintaining six feet social distancing, and of course, contact tracing as referenced. Mr. Corns, if you could go on to the next slide? I'm happy to share with you this evening, moving forward. I know Dr. Zarchin talked with you about our journey moving forward into the rest of the school year, and I'm here to share with you some of our highlights of this upcoming summer's learning program. We are pleased to offer this summer a combination of both in-person or face-to-face learning opportunities as well as virtual synchronous instruction for students, and paired also with a self-paced, fully virtual option for students as well. Our in-person programs that will be offered both in-person and synchronously virtually are our Bridge to Kindergarten program, which is a brand-new program this year thanks to a state grant, and this is an in-person-only opportunity for our students who will be entering kindergarten. We will, as always, we always offer the Extended Year program, which is for students whose IEP require them to have the Extended Year learning program. Again, this will be offered in-person. Extended learning opportunity for our Title I schools, our English language learners. These programs prioritize our English language learners who are Level 1 and Level 2 speakers. Our Extended Year learning program, which services students at the middle grades and students at the high school grades as well. Our Math Academy, and for students who participate in the Early College Access Program, that's a magnet program at Woodlawn High School, those students will have a virtual summer program in which they are taking coursework with CCBC. Lastly, we will also offer, again this summer, what we refer to as the Summer Learning Hike. This was a new program that we offered last year that began the very first week that school closed and ran all the way through to the very last week prior to school starting this year. This program is offered for students that will be in grades K to 12 for next school year. It is entirely optional. Students can drop in. This is self-paced, and they work through the programs at the convenience of themselves and their family. They can take a week off, they can jump back in and work through it in, again, a self-paced manner. We did see last year great participation in the Summer Learning Hike. I think particularly our third graders last year used it a great deal throughout the summer, so we are excited to offer that again this summer. Our intent was to provide a robust bridge that spanned this year into next school year and to provide the learning in the formats that we believe would serve our community well for those families that want to remain virtual. We're offering much of what we're doing in a virtual format for those families that want and prefer the face-to-face or in-person instruction. We're very pleased to be able to offer that again this summer. And at that, I believe I conclude the presentation. I think, Mr. Corns, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. And at this point, I will turn it back over to Dr. Williams. Thank you.
So thank you, team, for giving an update. I will then turn it to Chair Scott.
Thank you. So we can start taking questions. It looks like our first one is from Mr. Offerman.
First of all, thank everyone. It was an extremely well-done presentation. I'd like to focus back on the middle and the high school situation. Is it correct to say that what's standing in our way to bringing those students back in larger numbers or for more days is the fact that they are changing classes? Is that the primary problem?
Well, that will come into play if MSD and the Maryland Department of Health, if, when, they adopt the new CDC guidelines. At this point, they have not been adopted. With what we have with our percent positivity at this point, we're in that high transmission area, and it's really difficult when you add that to the fact that they are not cohorting, they're moving from class to class. So to your point, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Offerman. Next is Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Dr. Zarchin, is your area in charge of the procurement of PPE for schools?
So we work on part of that with facilities. It depends on the PPP, PPE that's desired.
So just to clarify, you work in conjunction with facilities to tell them what would be needed in the schools so that it's all available, correct?
Yes, and I can have Dr. Scriven and Ms. Somerville speak to details about that, but we do work together on ordering, yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. When you were talking about the schedule, you were talking about May-June continued expansion of in-person learning. Are you talking about, you're talking about four day a week, but you only mentioned elementary schools. Are you expecting it to just stop at elementary schools?
No, we will start with elementary schools. As I mentioned, one of the critical areas that we're looking at is, as we introduce new variables, bringing more students in, we're monitoring- new variables, bringing more students in, we're monitoring lunch time outside of the building. We hope to expand beyond elementary, but what the research is saying is that, and our experts, the spread is lowest with our elementary-age students, so as we expand, that's where we will start.
And just so I'm clear, you're not able to move forward any faster in April because of why?
I'm not sure your quest. I don't.
You said you're waiting until May to make the expansion. My question is, why are you waiting all the way until May?
Because of monitoring metrics, making sure that as we're still transitioning students back, learning from not only situations in school that have arise, but also athletics. So that's that safe pace to a return and moving at a pace where we can learn along the way and be very careful that we don't get in a situation where we go too fast. We have positive cases that send students or cohorts back home because of spread.
So could you just explain, in order for us to expand to four days, what metrics do you need to see in order to agree to that?
So the one metric we're looking at right now is, or two actually, total cases per 100,000 based on a seven-day and percent positivity based on a seven-day. So right now, in addition to that, and this may be even more important, it's learning from our positive cases that occur in schools. And that's really critical. Where are we doing a good job with our protocols, our mitigation practices, and where are we struggling a little bit? The other piece is, as we have returned, the tracking of cases that our nurses are doing, it requires a great deal of time. Contact tracing for one positive can lead to many, many interviews with students and So those are things that we're learning to grow with. We're getting better at it, but it is taking time, and it is really stretching our nursing staff pretty thin right now.
Thank you, Dr. Zarchin. I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you. I think one thing that may be helpful is having Ms. Somerville talk about the work of contact tracing. I think that's an area that is not always understood, the time, effort, energy, and resources that go into that. Ms. Somerville, could you give us a quick overview of that contact tracing work?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I was double muted. So in Baltimore County schools, we're doing a targeted contact tracing. There's places that are just sending whole pods or classrooms home when there's a case, and we feel like it's important to make sure that we identify persons with close contact and then notify those persons personally that they had an exposure to COVID. So we interview the case, and if the case is in a student, we have to interview the teacher, because very rarely will parents know in the classroom who this student was in close contact with. We also have to touch base with the bus driver and look at the bus seating arrangements and notify all staff as well. So what we find is using that targeted approach, which minimizes exclusion, use that whole class goes home for two weeks, it works, but it is really kind of using a sledgehammer when a screwdriver will work. But it really, that takes a significant amount of time to do well and to provide the support to our parents and our staff that they need when they learn that they've been exposed to COVID. We link them to testing resources, we provide them information and, you know, for our staff, information about leave and working remotely. So that's, in a nutshell, the contact tracing. And I'd like to just add one thing that we're monitoring very closely is the concept of secondary spread, which is our goal is no transmission in school. And so we're really monitoring the people that we put out as close contacts and the schools where we have cases to make sure that we do not have secondary spread, and if we do, what we can do to mitigate that, because we really need to keep our students and staff safe and to gain the trust of our community that we can open and operate safely during a pandemic.
Thank you for that. Next, we have Dr. Hager.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Somerville, and thank you to those of you who did the presentation for your transparency with all the return-to-school data, and thanks for assembling these great health advisors, and it's just I'm really excited about where we are right now. And I, given our current positivity rate, I actually really appreciate the pace that we're going with, and I think that we're in, again, in a really good position, and I thank you all for all your hard work. So my questions are really more looking forward a little bit. So April 27th happens to be my birthday, and it also happens to be the day that 16-year-olds in Maryland are allowed to get vaccinated. So given that, are we, do we have a plan in place to track our students that are going to be vaccinated like we would with any vaccine, just so we can start to understand kind of how widespread these vaccines are? I'm also hopeful that this summer, younger children will be allowed to get vaccinated.
Can everyone mute, please?
Can everyone mute, please?
So basically, what do we have in place to prepare, because that is right around the corner?
Thank you for that question. So I'll start with the tracking who's been vaccinated. That is very difficult because of privacy. We have been asked, you know, how many of our employees have received the vaccine, and we really, we can share how many, you know, lengths we can offer, but beyond that, it's very difficult to have a sense of how many employees have received the vaccine because of those privacy issues. I think the same will hold true with our students. What we do have a sense in with our employees now is that we have fewer and fewer who are reaching out for the vaccines when we have availability. And the other piece is, we don't know who's gone beyond the clinics that we've offered in coordination with Baltimore County Department of Health.
That is really interesting. So would it require something from the Department of Health to add the COVID vaccine to some sort of a vaccine list for students, or is that unlikely to happen?
So, good evening, Dr. Hager. I'll let Ms. Somerville jump in if I am incorrect, but Comar dictates required vaccinations for students, I believe.
This is Ms. Somerville. Comar does dictate those immunizations, but our weekly downloads of data from Maryland Immunet include required and non-required vaccines, so we actually will get that data as part of our data-sharing agreement with Maryland Immunet.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then, was there a plan in place for a timeline for when we will release our fall plans?
So I'll start. As Dr. McComas shared, the bridge between the spring and the summer is what we're working on, and if the metrics are looking favorable with all the information and guidance that we receive, I don't see why we wouldn't start. Again, if the metrics are looking favorable and we have the guidance through all of our partners, CDC, of course, the Maryland Health Department, and MSD. Principals are already looking at staffing, so we are anticipating, I can't say a normal start, but we're anticipating starting a school year that we, similar to other school years. But at this point, as Dr. Zarchin was sharing, we're going to continue to monitor those guidelines and see if anything may change. As you all know, last year, we had to submit a plan in June, and I think we got feedback in July, so we'll continue to provide some updates once we have received. But yes, the way I'm looking at it, if everything is aligned, we are planning for, try to be somewhat of a traditional start of a school year, if you will.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you. It's like Ms. Mack?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Scott. I think this question may tie into what Dr. Williams just references, the bridge between spring and summer. Yesterday, the state superintendent, Karen Salmon, sent out a memo with some attachments with the subject of second-tier performance metrics, and it appears that BCPS, I believe all systems were asked to provide data on the fall 2020 semester, and it looks like BCPS reported that seventh graders received 24.3 hours per week of synchronous learning. A parent emailed me and perhaps other board members, I think yesterday, that her child had only received 14 hours a week of synchronous learning. Can anybody explain how there could be a discrepancy, and if there is a discrepancy, what we're doing now to make sure that kids really do get the 24 hours a week?
Sure, Ms. Mack, I'm happy to speak to that. What you'll see in that question for the second-term performance was that the instructional model hours, and that includes the small-group hours on Wednesday morning, and those small groups are, they fluctuate, and they're customized by teacher, by subject, by grade level to service students. So those small groups are designed, they can be used for students that need additional intervention, they can be used for students that need acceleration. And so that's really what that model that took into account that, and so that's where you may experience variation and fluctuations.
So thank you, Dr. McComas, very much. When we submitted our hours, did we extrapolate based on who we thought was attending on Wednesdays, or who could attend, or who actually attended?
Now, the model, what was submitted is what the model is, which is the universal model, and then the way that gets implemented is where you get the nuances.
So in this case, where this mom is reporting that her son only got 14 hours, would it be safe to say that this child may not have participated in Wednesday learning?
That's possible. I don't know the particular, you know, child's schedule and when or they may or may not have had that opportunity.
And one more quick question about that, and I know we've talked about it, but is that totally up to the student to participate in the Wednesday learning?
Well, it's really organized. You need to think about Wednesdays, and like, instructionally, what we think about Wednesdays is where, and Ms. Mack, I know you visit classrooms as many of our board members do, which we appreciate. You know, in the normal setting, you would see the teacher pull that small group, and they might work with a small group for 20, 30 minutes, then they would have those students maybe move on to some independent work and pull another group. And so those Wednesday mornings were really designed to have that kind of flexibility so that we could provide really focused, targeted support for students, and that that was not just limited to intervention, students that need to get caught up, but that that could also be used for students to have enrichment acceleration. And so I hope that you can understand how there is variance in the way that becomes implemented.
But we would not turn a student away who wanted to participate on Wednesday learning?
No, but I would say that that's, it is structured and organized by the classroom teacher, how they utilize that time.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. McComas.
My pleasure, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have a question from Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Dr. McComas. I had a follow-up question regarding Wednesday instruction to Ms. Mack's questions.
Yes.
Are we tracking on a student level those instructional hours?
So that would be that the classroom teachers would, I do not at the system level have a system for tracking that, because that fluctuates classroom by classroom.
Thank you. Are teachers required to track it?
I would say that that would just be part of their instructional planning for the week.
So is that a yes or no?
As a principal, I would expect my teachers be able to share how that time is used.
Are principals required to report it at a system level?
No, we do not have a system-level reporting mechanism for that.
So to Ms. Mack's point, she asked about extrapolation for the data that was sent to MSD. That assumes that all students are receiving the 24 and 1/2 hours of synchronous instruction per week?
Yes, and the models that were put forward to MSD way back in the fall, that was part of what this model puts forward, talks about the average of the hours.
So is it expected that within the six hours on Wednesday, that all students would have synchronous contact or synchronous instruction during those?
No, that is really for customized group work, and so that can fluctuate. You may have a student who has it one week and a student that doesn't have it necessarily the next week, depending upon how the teacher is using their small-group structures.
Because what I'm hearing is that students are not receiving that synchronous instruction on Wednesdays, and that that's the norm rather than the exception. So I'm asking about tracking so that I have some data when we hear these things anecdotally to be able to validate or, you know, invalidate what we're hearing.
Sure.
So Ms. Hen, I'm sorry. Ms. Hen, I would suggest that you would share that information with me or with Dr. McComas if you're hearing such reports. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kuhn.
Well, thanks, Ms. Scott. I have a motion, and it's, I'll just read it. I move to direct the Office of Internal Audit to immediately begin an audit of the Education and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund of $23.7 million that was awarded to BCPS through the CARES Act grant on June 26 of 2020. The also, the Office of Internal Audit will provide their final report at the June 8, 2021 Board of Education meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, Hen.
Thank you. So Mr. Kuhn made a motion to direct the Office of Internal Audit to immediately begin an audit of the Education and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund of $23.7 million that was awarded to BCPS through the CARES Act grant on June 26, 2020. The OIA will provide their financial report at the June 8, 2021 Board of Education meeting, and that was seconded by Ms. Hen. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll speak briefly to it. Everybody's very interested in the amount of money that has come to the school system, and this is just the first part. This is known as CARES Act I, or people refer to it as CARES Act I. So I'm talking about the initial amount of money. There's a CARES Act II, and that will be a separate discussion as that money is a focus of future meetings and of future plans. But this motion is specifically to say, this is what we've spent the money on, here are the things that we bought for that, so that it can be made public as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Goover, if we could do a roll call vote, please? Oh, I apologize. Excuse me. Mr. McMillian.
Yeah, in conversation with Ms. Barr, and for those that are unaware, I'm Reese, excuse me?
Your microphone's not on.
The light's on. Now, they had me turn down low for some, because I'm loud. For those of you that don't know, I'm on the, I'm the chairman of the Internal Audit Committee, and in conversation with Ms. Barr, there's a possibility that the CLA, an external audit group, is looking at these expenditures. So my argument would be, why, if we get an answer that they're doing that, why are So my argument would be, why, if, if we get an answer that they're doing that, why are we going to duplicate their work? To me, that's not working smart, smartly. So, now, if they're not doing that, yes, that's something that the Audit Committee can look at. But I think that, you know, we've got committees to look at things. Why throw something out there? Let's the committee look at it. If the committee justifies it, and I'm a transparent guy, if, if that's something the committee wants to do, if the committee says, no, they don't want to do it, we come back to the board, and then we vote on it if the outside audit is not doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillian. Looks like there was a comment first from Mr. Kuhn and then Ms. Causey.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thanks, Mr. McMillian. I appreciate your insight and your comments. Having been the chair of the Audit Committee for nearly two years, I understand how it works. And one of the things that I would point out is that we have set aside hours for the Office of Internal Audit to execute on board-directed projects. And this would be a board-directed project, so the hours should be in the budget and should be available. And we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, so I believe we have the ability to do that. The other point that I would like to make is, I don't know what the CLA audit's going to cover, or when is actually going to happen, but this is a very timely audit, and I believe, and that's the reason why I set a June 8 date for the report to be due, was to provide the information to the public as soon as possible. And I believe all the information should be available, and Dr. Williams and his team will make that all very available to the Office of Internal Audit, and therefore will have at least CARES Act I, you know, provided to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Ms. Causey, and then Mr. McMillian again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate Mr. McMillian as chair of the Audit Committee discussing his perspective on the use of Clifton Larson as the outside auditor, they're the typical outside auditor, to do the work. And I would support the motion as, as presented, and if the Office of Internal Audit decides to utilize Clifton Larson to get the work done, then that would be up to the chief auditor to do so. I think it is helpful for the full board to have its opinion known about what's important. So I would, I would support the motion and also support these types of motions in terms of having the full board to express their opinion about what's important, and also to the timeliness of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMillian, then Ms. Rowe.
Dr. Williams, can we have Chief Auditor Barr speak to this, if she's available?
I'm happy to see if Ms. Barr is on the line. I will just remind the board, we've shared how we've used the CARES I Act. We've shared it in the weekly update, and we're happy to share it again with the board, and some of the ideas that we plan to use with the CARES II. So I don't know if Ms. Barr is on the line.
While you check, perhaps we could go to Ms. Rowe? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think the issue is less about has, has the expenditures been shared with the board so much as are these expenditures being shared in a detailed format with the public? And if the auditors are looking into this, then that just means that they're going to verify the numbers. I see no reason why the Office of Internal Audit cannot ask for the information and supply a report that's available to the public, and then the external auditors will do what they do and confirm that the information is accurate. And Mr. Kuhn is right in that that external audit could take a lot longer, and we're getting a lot of scrutiny on people wanting to know precisely how the CARES Act money was spent. And if we don't offer accountability for how the first amount was spent, then there's just going to be constant questions about future amounts. And so I think that, I think that we should do this.
Thank you. We have a question from Dr. Hager.
Yeah, a question for, for Mr. McMillian and for Mr. Kuhn. So, Mr. McMillian, when would this audit be available, and would it automatically be made public, the one that you're referring to?
Ms. Barr's in contact with a woman named Cherry King, and she responds, she emailed her here 15 or 20 minutes ago. She won't know the, the details of what they're looking at until tomorrow morning.
Okay. And then, Mr. Kuhn, why, why do you feel this is so urgent that we, we can't wait for the audit that Mr. McMillian is referring to?
So we're talking about significant amount of funds, and our understanding is, is what's been reported to the board is that, you know, this money's been spent. Waiting, I honestly don't, so we're referring to the single audit that happens every year. It's an annual thing that happens where an outside auditor comes in and makes sure that we're spending money appropriately throughout the entire system. So I'm not quite sure the timing. I'm sure that perhaps some staff could speak to the timing. I don't recall it off the top of my head. But I, what I'm seeing is, we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year. I know that there's, this is, this is a large dollar item, if you want to think of it that way. And I think that the Office of Internal Audit could focus on it and do it in this relatively short amount of time. I have faith in them.
I just add that I, we've had updates almost weekly on how the money's been spent, and so it would surprise me if an auditor found something different, you know, because it's been so transparent. So, so yeah, that's just my own perspective.
Trust, but verify.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Ms. Barr just joined us. Ms. Barr, are you there?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Barr. Thank you for joining us. Mr. McMillian, you had a question of Ms. Barr, or you wanted her to speak to the motion proposed?
Yes, if she would speak to this, please.
Okay, so let me, let me restate the motion for you, Ms. Barr, because I think she's phoning in and can't see the chat. So Mr. Kuhn made a motion to direct the Office of Internal Audit to immediately begin an audit of the Education and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund of $23.7 million that was awarded to BCPS through the CARES Act grant on June 26, 2020. The OIA will provide their final report at the June 8, 2021 Board of Education meeting. So Mr. McMillian asked, and I think it would be helpful for all of us, if you could speak to that motion. Particularly, is that something that your office is already doing? Would this work be redundant or repetitive, or is this something that's already being undertaken?
Okay, I do apologize. I lost power. I was watching the meeting, and I missed the, the conversation about, I caught the tail in, about the conversation about the single audit. The board's external auditors, Clifton Larson Allen typically do the audit related to federal expenditures. And at the Audit Committee back in October, Ms. Cherry King, who is the partner on, on the job for the board, expressed that they would be reviewing these expenditures as part of the single audit in this upcoming year. So in order to avoid or eliminate redundancy, I wanted to check with her first to make sure, first of all, that they were going to include that as part of their single audit process this year. If not, then of course, there would be things that we could do in relation to looking at those expenditures. Excuse me, but as part of the single audit, there's typically a compliance supplement that is issued related to particular areas of funding, for example, special education, Title I. There would be that same thing issued with related to the CARES funding monies. And so there would be particular things that they would be looking for related to these expenditures to make sure that the expenditures were made in compliance with all federal regulations and expectations, and that the expenditures were allowable. So I'm not sure when the motion indicates that they want us to audit these expenditures specifically, what would it be that we would be looking for other than those two things? I would seek clarification to the motion.
Thank you for that, Ms. Barr. Looks like there's a comment and an amendment from Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and thank you, Ms. Barr, for joining us and for your comments. I agree that the board would have to define the scope of the audit that Mr. Kuhn has proposed. Therefore, I'd like to offer the following amendment. I'd like to amend the motion on the floor by inserting the statement, "The scope of the audit will be determined by the Board Audit Committee," so that Mr. McMillian, as chair of the Audit Committee, can oversee that on behalf of the committee, and that it can be further clarified, and to ensure that the work is not redundant. And if I may speak to, continue to speak to this, Madam Chair.
Well, so you made a motion to add to the, you made a motion to add an amendment. Does that require a second?
Second, Rowe.
Okay, thank you. So what Ms. Hen amended it is to add, "The scope of the audit will be determined by the Board Audit Committee." Okay. And it was seconded by Ms. Rowe. Yes, Ms. Hen, you may speak to your motion or your amendment.
Thank you, and thank you to Ms. Barr for speaking to the, the scope of the external audit, that it does include federal funding. However, this is but one small piece of what an external audit looks at. The, the focus I see and the depth to which this internal audit would go would be far different. An external audit always looks at small samples, and even given that, the fact that this is a small piece of their work, in contrary to what internal audit could do, which would be a much deeper dive. And again, as defined by the scope determined by the Audit Committee, I would look to our Audit Committee to determine exactly what that scope is. I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. I think this would give the board and the public the confidence that we require to understand these expenditures. And I appreciate Dr. Williams' transparency in providing this information to the board through the weekly updates. However, the public also needs to have this information at the ready. So I would want to share this report with the public, and I support having it presented at the June 8 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like there is a comment from Ms. Causey, or Ms. Hen's amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would support Ms. Hen's amendment, and I would just ask the, I would just ask the Audit Committee Chair to consider, in addition to the specific amount indicated by Mr. Kuhn, to also evaluate the scope, as Ms. Hen said, Coronavirus Relief Fund for Technology, which I'm not sure is that 12 million, the Coronavirus Relief Fund for Tutoring, I think that might be another 12 million, and the G E E R K-12 Technology. So in terms of what the scope may be, I would just ask them to consider that, and I will be supporting her amendment.
Thank you, and it looks like Ms. Rowe?
Oh, so I had questions for Ms. Barr that aren't necessarily in the process.
Oh, on the amendment, okay.
Of the amendment.
Oh, okay, then.
But I mean, I can ask them now if you want.
No, I thought your question was on, for Ms. Barr, on the amendment, so.
No, it was on the general motion.
Okay, so if we could process the amendment, and then, then we can go back to the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gover, if we could take a roll call vote for Ms. Hen's amendment to the motion?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pester?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was for the amendment. Now, we're back on the motion itself, and Ms. Rowe, you have a question about the motion?
Yes, I had a couple of questions for Ms. Barr. Can you tell me when the external audit is expected to be finished, and if the results of that audit would be made public? And if, if they audit the CARES Act funding, are they taking samples, or are they auditing everything, or is there a level of materiality? Can you explain those questions, please?
Sure. So by law, they have to complete the CAFR by September 30, and that report is public, and the single audit by December 31, and that report is public. In the past, they have completed both reports, the CAFR and the single audit, by September 30. Due to the COVID pandemic, however, this year, that deadline for the single audit was extended, I believe, until March of this year. So it was a little bit different due to the COVID pandemic. Both reports are public. They've always been posted on the board's website. I don't know if they've been restored yet due to the ransomware attack, but the information is public information. With respect to their approach, I believe, Ms. Rowe, as you'll recall, when you were the chair of the Audit Committee, that was explained with respect to materiality with, with regard to the reporting of their findings. They do select samples, but again, it's proprietary information for the company with respect to how they select those samples and how materiality is determined.
Okay, so Ms. Barr, is it accurate to say that if the Office of Internal Audit did an audit of these CARES Act expenditures and had it done by June, that, that if there were problems that your findings that you had, that you could have corrective actions in place for future upcoming CARES Act funding, of which were expending substantial amounts, well before we even get the CAFR?
If the due date was June 8, that's a correct statement, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Barr.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Gover, may we take a roll call vote, please, on Mr. Kuhn's motion?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
No.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
No.
Ms. Pester?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Favor of six.
Okay, so the motion did not pass. Thank you. Okay, so, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the report on the multi-year improvement plans for all schools, or my IPASS, and for that, I call on Dr. Scriven and Mr. Dixitt.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Oh.
Yes, sir. I had not yet spoken to the reopening agenda item and had put in the chat that I'd like to make my comments.
I didn't see it in the chat. I thought I'd asked for any more comments, but yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thought you were referencing Mr. Kuhn's motion. So emails that I have sent due to the limit of two minutes per board member per agenda item in the board meeting, I submitted an email, seven pages with links weeks ago, and the answers were included in the board weekly update but not attached to board docs as other reopening issues. So I would like an understanding of what is the rationale of what issues are attached to board docs around reopening, as I know that there were other, several times, other questions were answered and attached to board docs. I'm just going to list, quickly list them, and any updates that would be available, I would appreciate. A lot was covered tonight, so staff will understand, Dr. Williams will understand. So Cohort D, or are there... How is it going with CDC guidance for accommodations for teachers and staff with COVID concerns for in-person to be provided the opportunity to telework or virtual instruction? What is the progress? Also, a corollary to that, which is new, if teachers need to quarantine due to possible exposure, but they're not ill, can they teach virtually from home? We've discussed increase of in-person instruction, but there is still, you know, more understanding needed. The hybrid instruction model, right now, it's concurrent, and teachers are doing a fabulous job. It's a lot of work. So I'm curious about the opportunity for local schoolhouse autonomy of that, of evolving and continuous improvement based on student learning needs. Also, vaccination update. The media has reported BCPS has a low percentage of our staff vaccinated, but in working personally at the vaccine clinics and seeing thousands of educators come through, I think we're further along in what is the update.
Okay.
The care arrangement is addressed.
So that is.
Received a PPE. And also, if I, if I could, Madam Chair, one of our speakers this evening, Principal Kyria Joseph, had great suggestions about the families that are not involved in virtual instruction. So I really would like to understand more about that, especially since in looking at the BCPS news releases, there are no press releases about the reopening, the success.
Okay.
I mean, it's really, my mind needs more.
All right. Thank you for that. And I'm sure you said those questions were emailed, and staff will respond to those.
I would like to hear.
I would, we must move, we, we do have to move on, though, because we have the my I-Pass, and they've been waiting, and we're an hour behind. And a lot of parents are going to want to hear about this study. So we want to be respectful of everyone's time. So you said you emailed the questions, and they responded to you, and they were also, you said, in the weekly updates.
And my question to Dr. Williams, which I did get asked early on, which is, what is the rationale for including them in board docs?
Okay, can you email that to Kathleen directly so that we can move on with our agenda item?
I would understand it here.
Because that's something that you can, that can be shared in our weekly updates. But it's now 10:21, and we have a very important presentation. So with all due respect for all of us, I think that we should move on so that we can have this very important presentation. So the next item on the agenda is the report on the multi-year improvement plan for all schools, or my I-Pass. And for that, I call on Dr. Scriven and Mr. Dixitt.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Mr. Dixitt is on to frame what this my pass presentation is grounded in as we prepare ourselves to receive information with respect to Phase 2. So, Mr. Dixitt, please move forward. Yes, sir.
Very much. So, good evening, Chair, Ms. Scott, Vice Chair, Ms. Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. As Dr. Scriven indicated, I'll just give you a little bit of context of what we are doing tonight. As the board will recall, Baltimore County Public Schools and Baltimore County, we are collaborating in the development of a multi-year improvement plan for all schools. Back in September, September 29, 2020, we presented, or the Cannon Design presented to the board, the Phase 1 recommendation for high schools. Before that, updates on the progress of the plans were presented in the meetings of March 10, 2020, and August 11, 2020. Then another report was provided to board on October 13, 2020, and that also included responses to dozens and dozens of questions that we received from board members. In addition to that, Cannon Design has been conducting several interactive sessions with different focus groups. For Phase 2, which is what you are going to hear tonight, additional, additional focus groups have been created with the help from Baltimore County. And we do want to thank the county executive for providing funding for the additional focus groups to increase our community outreach effort. These focus groups are in the form of Focus Group Summit and Stakeholder Advisory Committee. So tonight, we have the Senior Vice President of Cannon Design, Mr. Paul Mills, and his associate, Dr. David Lever, here to make the presentation for elementary schools and middle schools. And this time around, we'll have another presentation, sometimes in June-July period, to complete the final part of the my I-Pass. So with that, I'm going to pass this to Mr. Paul Mills, Senior Vice President of Cannon Design. Paul, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
So the screen is yours?
Okay, let me double check, make sure my screen sharing is working on Teams here. Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I thought I had my screens all set up. Here we go. All right, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. Really appreciate the privilege to work with the Baltimore County Public Schools, school system, and leadership, stakeholders, students, and families. We'll give you an update as Pete was, was introducing to Phase 2 with the my I-Pass. And it seemed very similar in form and content to what we presented to you on the high schools back in the fall, with a subtle difference. With the luxury of time to be able to actually perform the sort of outreach and engagement with stakeholders as part of the process, we are presenting to you the assessment findings first. And these findings and data are being used with the focus groups, with the stakeholder committees, and with the community at large to formulate the overall plan at the end. So I'm going to reintroduce myself. It's been a few months. Paul Mills with Cannon Design. I do nothing but this type of strategic planning, work with school systems around the country. I'm passionate about public education, have my kids in public education, and have dedicated my career to working with large, complex school systems around the countries, similar to Baltimore County Public Schools. I'll allow David to introduce himself quickly as well.
So, good evening, members of the board. I'm David Lever. I'm delighted to be working again with Baltimore County Public Schools from a very different perspective. I worked with them from 2003 to 2016 in my role as Executive Director of the Public School Construction Program. Since then, I've been engaged with Baltimore County Public Schools through a number of separate projects, but I'm very happy that I'm working with Cannon Design on this extremely meaningful, very important project. And we hope that we can really deliver to you important results that will help to shape the capital program for years to come.
Thank you, David. So the agenda tonight, we'll, we'll get through as quickly as we can to allow you to have plenty of time for questions. A quick reset on the overview of the my I-Pass, particularly for those who might be tuning in for the first time and aren't as familiar with the project. We will speak to the assessment findings in two different ways. One, about the benchmarking, looking at the three pillar studies and those benchmarking metrics and scores and rankings that result from them. We'll also look at the findings in terms of the dollars and cents that are related to the facility assessments that are out there. Unlike the high school presentation where everything was squished into one because of the timeframe to make initial recommendations relative to the ongoing CIP back last fall, the recommendations for middle schools, elementary schools, plus the bookmarked topics that were mutually exclusive scenarios that need to be vetted through the community, will be presented later, as Pete was suggesting. So the multi-year improvement plan for all schools really is just what the title implies. It's a, it's a capital improvement program that's long range in planning scale, but as the all schools notion of the title, it really speaks to equity. It speaks to planning with a notion that is data-driven, that is based on common values and based on the voice of students, families, and community of Baltimore County in a way that achieves equity for all students. A very primary aspect of this as well is looking at opportunities to maximize state funding, so not all, we're not limited just to the county's generosity to take care of capital projects. So we're looking for opportunities to maximize that funding and to find low-cost, no-cost sorts of solutions where available and relevant to the educational program. The facility assessment study rests on three pillars, as we're referring to them, of analysis and study. They are, and we'll get into more detail in a moment, the Educational Adequacy and Equity Assessment, Facility Condition Assessment, and the Capacity Utilization Study. All of this has been done with overt engagement with internal and external stakeholders for the schools. And I'm really proud of the design of the work we've done in Phase 2 that has a very overt program with representative cross-sectional committees representing all areas of Baltimore County to look into, participate in the design process, to come up with alternatives and options that will be vetted through the community at large before making final recommendations. Our role as consultants in this, we're really here to be the impartial, unbiased professionals that do this sort of work around the country and nationwide. We're facilitating this process. We have concluded all the technical work with our team of engineers and architects that have gone through your schools from fence line to fence line, from foundation up to rooftop, to really look at the health and the designs of the schools and how they fit into these three pillars. One note about being impartial and biased, that it's just that no one within Baltimore County Public Schools, the community, county government, no one anywhere has influenced our recommendations. These are our professional recommendations and opinions that we put forward. And while tonight we're not talking about recommendations, I want to share with you that all of the facilities' data are objectively observed, measured, and surveyed with consistent professional methodology. To progress, and to reset where we used the same timeline last time to show where we were in the process, but we're presenting to you during Phase 2 the assessment findings. That's on the heel of, heels of the work we did for the high schools that concluded last fall. We've continued forward with the study of all your buildings, presenting your findings. And then what's important in this process is it's not, let's design the best solutions out there, present to the community, and see what they think. It's really about including and engaging the community in the process in a way that representational committees can actually participate in that work and vet that work, annotate that work before it gets presented to anyone and everyone in this community to look at and vet the various options that are put forward. It's not necessarily a, here's your solution, hope you like it. It's really about, there's different mutually exclusive pathways to achieve the goals here. And these are the different ways, whether it's option one, two, or three. And we can take measures through polling systems and outreach into communities to confirm objectively where the levels of support or lack thereof might exist for different options that are out there. All this work will conclude early summer, and we'll come back to you and present the full recommendations of the plan for all schools. And final report, after generations of working with you and finalizing all the actual documentation and such, will run concurrent with your CIP that gets started. Very important part of this, I hinted at it earlier, is that there are community forums, and they are virtual by, by nature of the pandemic that we're living in. But we had two of them so far, one in January to kick things off, one in February to get a pulse on decision-making criteria. We did initiate a second community survey during that time that was open a week with results that will be pending for you shortly. So jumping into the assessment findings that we have, first aspect being benchmarking, some of this will be a reminder for you, but for the benefit of others who are tuning in for the first time, the three pillars study really is, is three separate studies about the buildings themselves. Educational adequacy and equity is about the building and how it equitably supports the program and supports wellness, safety, security, et cetera. It's not about the culture at the school. It's not about the people, the professionals working, serving the students. It's really about those buildings. The second one, facility condition, is the name that applies about the physical health of the buildings. That's where the architects and engineers went all through the buildings to come up with a structured industry standard approach to measure the physical health of the buildings. And capacity utilization speaks to how full the building is based on a consistent rubric that's consistent with state policy for measuring and judging needs for capital improvements. All three of these pillars are based on a consistent, consistent notion of data that drives force ranking, of benchmarking, comparative, looking at schools in a way that we can tell which ones have a higher degree of need versus others, while they might have different sorts of needs. But this sort of weighted rubric is such that the greater the needs, the higher the priority. So the first pillar, educational adequacy and equity, really stressing on the term equity here, we worked very closely with Dr. Williams's team to define what equity means for Baltimore County Public Schools. And what we've really got down loud and clear is the notion that equity isn't about equality. You've seen these sorts of images before, but for those who might not be familiar with it, on the left-hand side, we've got equality, which really focuses on giving equal support everywhere, whether that's an educational program or the sorts of equipment and technology that's in the building, or down to the facilities. This standards-based approach is really common in the industry I work in, to come up with a nice, easy, common yardstick, measure all schools, and move on the way believing that you've achieved equality. Well, what we're, we've done here with Baltimore County Public Schools and its work, I'm very proud of, and the team has spent a lot of time working on is the notion of how do we design this in a way that actually achieves equity, which isn't about having the sameness for supports, but rather sameness for the outcomes. So as the image here would imply, there's a variable degree of supports that bring the actual people that inhabit the buildings up to a point where they are supported on an equitable and par level. For facilities, what, what does this mean? Well, in the equality space, we're talking about standards, Ed specs, minimum standards that either apply for the state, as we've looked at here, as well as where we know that Baltimore County wants facilities that exceed those. Well, that common baseline is where we start with this. It's very objective and data-driven. The second half, where it's a little more flexible, depending on the relative needs of the student populations that are served by the facilities, has a variable component to it, but it still has the rigor of data behind it. What are we talking about here? We're talking about vulnerable populations that are out there, talking about homeless students. We're talking about students that are English learners, special education students, and students that deal with poverty. Being able to translate the data that drives and measures the students that are inhabiting the school to a facility need, and whether it exists or not, is where we can judge and benchmark those relative needs. This is something that's very special and unique that I've proceeded in my career, having done this in a lot of places. And it's something, I believe, that will become a, a template that school systems around the country can use. In addition to this notion of equity and equality that's deep into this rubric that we've developed, we've been listening. We've been working with focus groups focused on equity, condition, and capacity. We've also been working with community groups and have had open invitation meetings. We've had surveys. And we've been hearing loud and clear, there's a few messages about what needs to be importantly worked into this. There's three examples I want to lift up. In the 1970s, many of you might have attended these, but the open plan schools, the pod schools, the ones where there's not walls in between all the classrooms, where the design intent is for teachers to be able to collaborate and, and do inter-curricular planning and delivery of instruction, team teaching and the sort. And to do the sorts of things we designed schools to do now with very interactive, project-based learning, et cetera. The only problem is back in the 70s, they didn't account for acoustics. And those sorts of schools are very difficult to operate. where the design intent is for teachers to be able to collaborate and do inter-curricular planning and delivery of instruction, team teaching and the sort. And to do the sorts of things we designed schools to do now with very interactive project-based learning, et cetera. The only problem is back in the seventies, they didn't account for acoustics. And those sorts of schools are very difficult to operate within without an extreme level of discipline on the part of the students to cooperate with your dedicated instructors that are doing their darndest to make sure they're learning. We've accommodated those open plan schools of which you have several that are still in use today in 2021. And we have adjusted factors within the adequacy rubric to signal that those are inequitable conditions and they ought to be addressed. Second, in looking at the high school initial recommendations, we put forward that a leaning towards renovations and additions is a cure for condition, capacity and adequacy for the facilities. And a common response we heard was that we've done additions. We know what additions are. We don't want additions. Peeling back the onion and learning more about the narrative is that in the 1990s, there was an expansion program to keep up with growth that was happening in your communities. And there were a bunch of modular classroom buildings that were deployed. Many of these were built to, in today's standards would be considered your learning cottages. I love the term. I had to look it up. But your temporary portable buildings that are really set there as a stopgap until you can get permanent construction. Well, these modulators were several of these built together in a way that was tried to mimic a permanent construction setup, but really didn't have the quality of true stick-built custom construction. And they're inequitable and they're getting old at this point. To accommodate that, we've looked at that in terms of both the adequacy and equity. And you'll hear about it again when we talk about the capacity. And third, I mentioned it earlier and talked about it, but the equity metrics for the vulnerable populations that are being served here really is hard baked in. All of this was from feedback that we've gotten from stakeholders across the county. We're proud to have accommodated it in the metrics. So you might recall this image from before. It's kind of a, you know, the hierarchical look at the scoring rubric that we've set up. And for you teachers out there, very familiar with how you look at student improvement and performance metrics and grades and things like that, doing it with a consistent weighted rubric, well, that's the same sort of methodology we've used here to measure the educational adequacy and equity of the buildings. So there's six categories here. You can see it on the inner wheel here. Wellness, relationships, collaboration, educational program, operational utility, safety and security, technology and furniture. And on the outer wheel are what we call the KPIs, we have 29 of them that are subcategories, if you will, that help measure out the relative strengths and weaknesses of the facilities. Those measures centered around equity and the types of facility accommodations for vulnerable populations, et cetera, are woven into multiple KPIs and categories. It's intentional. We hear loud and clear that equity is not a box to be checked. Equity is something that's pervasive and interwoven into all facets of an operation. And so we've taken that to heart and made sure that that's accommodated where it's appropriate within the framework. Those open plan schools that I mentioned earlier, those affect also multiple categories and KPIs. As an example, safety and security, you don't have the walls around, so it's a lot less or a lot more difficult to secure. It also affects relationships and collaboration as well as the operational utility of the building. So that there's a few different instances where the scores get drawn down in those facilities that are inequitable like that. So this whole framework and the breakdown and the weights that were set up were developed in close consultation and engagement with a very diverse and representative focus group that was tasked with helping us define what equity means and how do we use that in a way to measure your buildings? This is common with work that I do with other school systems around the country, but this was very tailored to Baltimore County and was done with representatives from both Baltimore County Public Schools as well as Baltimore County Government, as well as community liaisons, students involved in the process as well. Really proud of the work we've done here. And one real important note about it, this whole framework and all the weights were designed without naming a single school. What I mean by that is this was based on values. What's important? What's a priority for all students? That's how this thing was designed. It was done in a way without any sort of reference to how it might affect any sort of downstream metrics that would come forward from it. So how does it look for middle schools? Just like with high schools, we've shown here the scores. It's on a hundred point scale and it's in ascending order in terms of the, how well and sound and adequate the building is, meaning that towards the top of the list, ranked number one, two, three, four, et cetera, the lower numbered here, that represents more need. These are the needier schools that within that framework of six categories and the 29 KPIs, these are the ones that are in the worst condition versus the ones towards the bottom. We've annotated here also the regions of planning areas, for those that are familiar, but working kind of from going around the clock, southwest, northwest, central, northeast, southeast. I've annotated them there because I know that some folks might not know the entire county and all the school names. But this helps you at least geolocate a little bit here. And we'll get into some maps in just a little bit as well. We're going to give you a couple of minutes just to soak in maybe some of the schools you might have particular personal interest in or look at the top of the list, bottom of the list, but we're going to move on to the elementary schools. So here fitting them all on one page is a bit of a trick. Just we have 107 of them to accommodate here, but here's the same sort of ranking with the scores for elementary schools. The top five or so here that really color-coded here to kind of show degrees of the scale that's consistent across all the different categories and metrics is that Summit Park, Chatsworth, Johnny Cake, Red House Run, Scott Ranch, Pine Grove, and on down the way are the elementary schools that have the greater need relative to wellness, educational program, security, security, all those different aspects that we spoke about. We did a lot of QA QC on this. I don't have an image to share with you, but if you could imagine taking a timeline on the X-axis and the scores on the Y-axis, and then you plot all the dots on there for each school, each score, meaning the newer ones at the right, the older ones at the left, and draw a trend line through those dots. There's always an upward sloping trend line on this. There might be a couple outliers, but in general, the newer the building, the more educationally adequate and equitable it is. And that just bears out logical sense here that the newer buildings are ones built to today's standards versus the ones built back in the 60s, 50s and earlier in the process. We did it as part of QA QC to find any sort of, any sort of quality, data quality issues, but also it's just to validate, yeah, this is a, this is a very valid metric to use relative to your schools. We'll give you another couple of minutes. I know there's a lot on the list. All right, moving on to the next part. Oh, we do have backup reports that show all the different measures they fly beneath those KPI subcategories as well. And those, as previously were made available. On facility condition, our next rubric, it's really about an industry standard engineered approach to doing facility condition assessments. It yields an index, FCI, Facility Condition Index, which is a common way in the industry that looks at the costs of all the repairs required divided into the cost of replacing. So you get a general sense of quote unquote, what percent broken a building is. And it's an industry standard that we do. It is broken down by the cost and weighted by the cost, I should say. So that if you look at kind of the major systems and then subsystems from that and all the detailed parts, those are weighted not by consensus and working through live polling exercises, small group work and things like we did with educational adequacy and equity. This is driven by industry standards by cost. So those more expensive items are weighted heavier versus the lower cost items. This was validated by a similar focus group as well focused on facility conditions. For the findings here, you can kind of see through the veiled middle ground there where educational adequacy had a different ranking from what we have on condition. Now, there is some correlation on a couple of them, you know, some of the better ones are also in better educational adequacy condition, but not always the case. And you can see the huge relative needs that are different among all of your middle schools, just like among all your schools. Similarly to the other pillar here, the higher up on the list means the greater need. Give you just a moment there. There's nothing in the red category, which we're happy to see in the middle schools. So a lot of parity. And that's driven by the fact that you don't have many, I think there might, the newest middle school was from the early 2000s timeframe, whereas with high schools and middle schools, you have a lot more newer examples that can be brought to bear. So there's a little more flat curve as far as the outcome of these. So here's the elementary schools on condition. Now, elementary schools, you do have several newer facilities that wind up in the green category towards the end as well as some other ones that wind up towards the bottom end on the others. Many of these are in that red category there are among the ones you have on the Schools for a Future Program of legacy projects that are very near-term implementation. Again, I'll give you just a few more seconds here to take this in. Okay, moving on to the third pillar, capacity utilization and a similar map to the one we had with the high schools. So the picture tells a thousand words, right? Really kind of drills down and you can focus in on what's, what's going on here. Perry Hall is your only quote unquote red category school of middle schools across the county. And that's defined as ones that are over 115% utilized. A utilization, to refresher, is the projected enrollment, how many students divided into a state-rated capacity or how many seats, if you will. So if a building can, given its educational program and the way the spaces are being used, can accommodate 1,000 students and you have 800 students actually attending, you're at 80% utilization. If you're at 1,200 students, you're at 120% utilization. Those sorts of metrics help us determine how full the building is projected to be. So the figures we're using for the numerator of that figure is the seven-year enrollment projection. And these are provided by Baltimore County Public School staff and they work with consultants that do this sort of work. And as professionals, we did a peer review, look at the methodologies that they use and the sound industry standard approaches to doing enrollment projections. In some of the metrics, and one thing I wanted to signal on this, their baseline year for this was pre-COVID. That's very intentional. While we do have information from this current school year, it is very much an outlier case and we don't want to have that last year fling off and extrapolate some strange models that really are outlier cases due to the pandemic. So we've responsibly made sure that we're flinging off the diving board, if you will, for the enrollment projection is based on tried and true enrollment projections based on non-pandemic scenarios. So the state-rated capacity is an official recognized number by the state and there's actually a process to get that number changed as part of it. In the middle schools, just like with the high schools, we've made accommodations in the enrollment projections based on the BCPS's plans to bring some of the English for speakers of other languages programs that are regionalized right now back into the home high schools and middle schools. That means that fewer road miles for those students that want to avail themselves to those programs, those families that want to avail themselves to those programs, which is great. These reforms and improvements that are happening within this planning horizon of the seven-year period, we have accommodated and made adjustments in them so that we expect those students who are currently going perhaps to regional center in the future would be going to the one back home. So we made those plans. So we're not looking in a rearview mirror when we're doing our planning. We're actually looking forward. A couple of other points about the map here. You'll see in the details of it. The notion of areas that have the background uses the same color scale that we're talking about here. So if you're looking at the northeast, you're in this orange bracket, which means 100 or 100 to 114% utilized, means you're full and beyond a bit. In the white, it's between 85 and 99. I do know from looking at the details, there is a fine line difference between right on the cusp, the high end of the white range here in central or in the very low end range for northeast. So we're kind of in a parity space. So the map can be a little misleading, but I want to signal that we're fine tuned on all the details. But in those areas where you're full and you have specific schools that are projected to be over-enrolled, such as like a Perry Hall, that means that adjusting boundaries and finding some low-cost, no-cost solutions, operational solutions to the challenge are difficult unless you're doing something virtual. There's no neighboring capacity around those schools to relieve it because on average they're full throughout the area. So the findings, the benchmark scores, and let me explain how the scores are computed. It's pretty easy. If you're 100% capacity utilization or less, meaning that you've got plenty of space designed for the building, the way it's being used to accommodate your projected enrollment, you got a perfect 100 score. For every percentage point above 100% utilized, so if you're 101, your score will be 99. If you're 110, your score will be 90. If you're 113, you'd be an 87. You can kind of see that where we're starting to get into yellow, meaning that you're overutilized, you're over 100%. And the degrees to which are really with the numbers. So Perry Hall, the one in the red for middle schools is projected to be at 79 as the capacity score. So we're using everything on that 100-point scale. However, what that means is at the end of the day, it's projected to be 121% utilized. You can see the force ranking there. Okay. And then there's details behind it. I think our webmasters are still loading this, our dashboard on to our website. But all the details behind this on capacity utilization, just like with the high schools, are made available for middle schools and elementary schools as well. And the way to kind of see how this works, the notion on the left-hand side here, we're looking at that percent utilization. And over here is the delta between or the difference between the projected enrollment and the capacity. So if you're short, you're a negative number. If you have surplus, then it's a positive number. So you can kind of see that Perry Hall, that was the one that was in the red category, is projected to be short by 337 seats, which equates to that 121% that I was mentioning. And then you could look at the blended averages by region up at the top. So you can see where currently in central and northeast today, or your baseline year last year, we had surplus throughout the system, maybe with some schools a little over or some under, but on average, they were, there was a surplus. However, over the planning horizon of seven years, that essentially gets doubled up by growth. All right, elementary schools, a lot more dots on the page, a lot more red dots, as you might notice. Here on there, we have orange regions that cover just about the entire county, meaning you're full. There's not much surplus capacity to be had throughout the system. And there's probably some construction required, capital improvements required to accommodate the growth at the elementary, just like we had with the high schools. Again, this is a seven-year projection. It's a state-rated capacity. And one thing I wanted to signal here, remember those 1990s modulators we're talking about, those portables on steroids or everyone refers to them? These are, by today's standards, you would never call them permanent capacity. But right, wrong, or indifferent, they're recognized by the state and the state-rated capacity has permanent capacity. What does that mean? That means that we're presuming that that's a permanent construction that's going to be there for the long haul. But we know those buildings are at this point, you know, getting well beyond 20 years of age and have served their useful life for the type of construction that they are. And we have made adjustments in the capacity for long-range planning purposes to presume those buildings are not here for the long haul. And what does that do? Those buildings that have those types of modulators, that adequacy score, or excuse me, the capacity score, puts them up towards the top of the list. And I'll show the numbers and you can start to see a couple of them. So here's all of the elementary schools by capacity. And a couple of them right at the top, a zero capacity score, which I explained the math earlier. That means you're at 200 or more percent projected utilization at the end of the seven-year planning horizon. That's by nature that Red House Run that we know is on the Schools for a Future Program list. And Deep Creek Elementary School have those module buildings on it. You discount those off of it. The percent utilization goes up tremendously. So they get lifted up in terms of their inequitable situation. And any such school like that is also accommodated in that way as well. So a lot more red, as we saw on the map. So a lot more red, as we saw on the map. You can see the rankings of them where they are as listed here. And the ones that are have surplus capacity or plenty of capacity, 100% or less are the ones shown in green. I'll give you just a few more seconds to take this in. It's a lot of names. All right. So just like with the middle schools and the previous high schools, the dashboard that has all the details behind it that you can peruse. So now we have the three pillars. Now they're different measures, measuring different aspects of school operation and they're all very important. And just like with the high schools, we've blended these together with a weighted scoring system. And it wasn't just arbitrary, it was based on surveyed information from 22,000 people in the county. And to remind you, just as it was with high schools, we use the same weighting proportion or educational adequacy and equity is slightly higher than one third. At 35% facility conditions, slightly lower. And capacity utilization is right on par with, so it's roughly a third each. But we wanted to not just make it arbitrary, but rather we wanted to lift up what's a priority to your stakeholders. And we've accommodated that into the scoring system. So how's this going to be used? Three different ways. It's really centered on the notion of equity. It's to help inform what kind of facility options are the right ones for the schools, whether it's doing additions, doing renovations, replacing the school, relieving it with a separate school, et cetera. That could, it's informed by this data. As well as the sort of renovation project scope that could come out. You know, on the facility condition, we're talking about repairing stuff, right? Taking care of those roofs that are getting old, taking care of air conditioning, boilers, et cetera. Renovations in this educational adequacy and equity are a little more dramatic. These are items that bring the sorts of layouts of the floor plans and the designs of the schools in a way that really mimics what we would do when we're building a new facility. The accommodation in the cost that you're going to see in a moment account for not just doing a little facelift. We're talking about transformative outcomes for schools and we've done this around the country. And we have a lot of examples where you might even think it was new construction if you were to visit it. But at the end of the day, and thirdly, sequencing the projects. Coming up the way with so many different schools, 170 facilities that have a very wide range of difference that needs having a consistent system that's based on the voice and consistent values applied in an objective and mathematical way is the way we can help inform what the sequencing of the CIP projects ought to be. All of it centered around the notion that the greater the need exists, the higher the priority. So here's the aggregate need for the middle schools, blending the three in weighted by the 35, 32, and 33% weights on the different scores, we come up with the aggregate need score on the high schools. You can see the ones with the reds are float towards the top, the ones with the greens more towards the bottom. But you can see the relative rank and aggregate need scores for middle schools on the screen now. Give you a couple more seconds. Elementary schools, same. I don't have the three pillars on here, I just couldn't fit all the stuff on one page. And forgive me, I wanted to get all on one page so we can see it all at once. But you can see in red here, Red House Run, Deep Creek Summit Park towards the top and you're on average, your newer facilities towards the back. And I'll give you another moment to take these in. Okay, so that is the benchmarking aspects of the work, just like we do with high schools. So we have very consistent way of comparing the relative needs of facilities. So what's all this stuff going to cost? So what I'm going to share with you are the assessment findings. Now, this is assessment findings, it's not recommendations. And I can tell you, working with school systems in many states and all over the country, no one can afford to do all of their priorities. So assessment findings are just a measure of all the ocean, the universe of need that's out there. The recommendations and plan and how we systematically and prioritize in equitable way recommend a road path or a roadmap to achieve those is a different animal. So I'm going to show you the big glory numbers that we've got here. This includes all schools. You might remember from the high schools, the tally was around $1.2 billion with a B. And this includes that among those numbers. So right now we're talking about a range because we're not concluded with the process. We have engagement to do with stakeholders and design thinking to do with them to come up with those different options that could be used to remedy the nonconditions that are out there. That's why there's a bit of a range. So just like before, this is a seven year forecast of your condition needs. It's a seven year forecast of where the enrollment projections are going. And it's today's measure of educational adequacy and equity based on the rubric that we set forward. This number includes Schools for Future. You'll remember the class we called Legacy Projects from the previous one. We have several of those in middle schools and elementary schools under the title of Schools for Future. And those that have already commenced are considered legacy projects, but we have accommodated those and understand the cost implications of those. It also includes the potential for relief schools. And that gets into this little wedge here where we had capacity could be addressed in multiple ways. And for us to just early on in the assessment phase, tell you what the answer is, we just don't know. We have to go through the rigor of process and do the vetting through your stakeholders to come up with the most relevant solutions. You might remember from high schools, we looked at scenarios where in the northeast, you have a lot of shortfall of capacity that needs to be addressed. And we looked at, there's one scenario where you do additions on your existing high schools, just grow them a bit bigger. We showed you benchmarking and the sizes, what they might be versus the rest of the state of Maryland. But another way to resolve that would be a relief high school that will relieve all of them, change the boundaries around, change your feeder patterns, et cetera. And that's a different way. Now those have different price tags with them. Similarly, in our preliminary looks at middle schools and elementary schools, there are those same sort of mutually exclusive outcomes. And we want to go through the rigors of process to make sure we're addressing the needs that are responsive to your community. So it does not include land procurement, just like before. It's just, it's this very early preliminary stage. We just don't know what we're going to be and how much it might cost, et cetera. So we did not include it. Now that could be accommodated with other public agency swaps, those sorts of things. It could be straight procurement, et cetera. But at the time of implementation, that needs to be accommodated and that's not in these numbers. And just like before, it doesn't include unfunded replacement projects that would forestall other projects down the road. So that's a, you know, we're talking $4 billion. That's a big number to take on. As I mentioned before, there's not a school district in the land that can address all of their needs, all priorities, et cetera. But we want to start to look at what this roadmap might look like. And this might be some instances in terms, just like we did with the high schools, but recommendations might be ahead of us. Well, your your current rate of funding, which is 140 million a year, presuming that construction costs escalate over time and the budgets would proportionally go up, you would take 27 to 29 years to get that range of 3.7 to 4.1 billion dollars accommodated, which many generations of students going through your ranks to get through nearly 30 years of timeframe. It's definitely a call for how we prioritize things. The last time we talked about the prospect of the Built to Learn Act. And we looked at very early forecasting what that might be. And we believe that for the high school scenario, we were talking about maybe reducing the timeframe to about 15 years. So we used another 15 year sort of thing and it was right around the same range. Oh, by the way, I didn't mention earlier, the 1.2 billion we reported for high schools was for one third of your portfolio. So you're roughly in that same range extrapolated for the balance of the two thirds with your elementary, middle schools and centers and those sorts of facilities as well. So what would it take to get to the 15 year cycle? Well, required, just doing the math, it requires another 1.6 to 2 billion dollars above your current funding levels. Where that comes from is definitely something we want to work closely with staff on and come up the best strategies for it. That equates to about 107 to 133 million a year. So it's approaching what you're spending now on the higher end of additional funding required for capital projects in your schools. So Built to Learn Act does look very positive. And based on our current read of the legislation, the formulas are such that there's $462 million that's earmarked for Baltimore County Public Schools, which is a great deal of money. Now, the size of these circles is proportional. If that is your 4.1 billion there, that's 140 that you do every year. Would take 29 of these to fit in here. Well, there's your Built to Learn Act, which looks tiny compared to this, but actually it is significant. You know, it's over 10% of the projects. It is a one time program that we understand and we don't know all the details about the cash flowing, et cetera. We're not sure, but we're working closely with county and school system leadership to make sure we're being responsible with recommendations. But it does require the county also put in additional to be able to receive that matching grant, probably somewhere in the realm of 60, 40 split. Just by way of benchmarking and comparing, 462 million, it's a lot of money. It could accomplish a lot of things. Well, just by comparing what you've got in legacy projects and then in the planning stages that already on the county end are accommodated, but on the state end need to be backfilled with the final construction, there's about 240 million required to complete your Schools for Future as well as the Lansdowne Legacy Project there. So in some regards, look at that money at Built to Learn Act as a huge blessing for Baltimore County Public Schools, but that a lot of it is already on the short end accounted for with ongoing projects. So all this speaks to the need for prior. And we did this last time and showed you kind of the spread and it's a very similar curve that we had before. We've broken down all of these various costs among the three pillars in five tiers of priority. And it's thinking in terms of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? Those things that help you stay healthy and alive are the ones down at the bottom of the pyramid. Well, those are the high priority things here. We've put most of, most of that is capacity because you're at a point of being critical, particularly with high schools and elementary schools. One thing I want to signal here, and it's something I mentioned last time and it still bears out. The county government has been generous to keep the preservation of your assets sound. And your staff that's charged with maintaining your buildings has their eye on the ball. This number 14 million in priority one tells me something. It tells me you don't have these criticals and those sorts of things. 14 million sounds like a lot of money, but for a vast portfolio of 170 schools, it's nothing. And that means is you should be applauding yourselves that you've got great leadership and you've got priorities of taking care of your existing assets. What we've got to do is move on to taking care of future assets by bringing in the capacity that's needed critically. Now, as you start to get down deeper into the priorities, you start to see a little bit more of the facility condition costs in there that's more routine maintenance and more of this stuff that's coming up on the horizon that systems that will reach the end of their useful life within the planning horizon. And those adequacy and equity, which these things are just in my mind, must haves for an educational facility. So when we start getting deep into, you know, priority three and stuff, that's where we're going to see a lot of those sorts of priorities. But anyway, share this with you to give you a general sense of what we found with our three pillar study and the benchmarking associated with it, what dollars are there. We're not going to step into the recommendation, so like we did with the high schools yet, because we do have process to get through. But we'll come back to you in early summer with those findings. And with that, I will conclude our presentation and maybe give you a little bit of recap of what's coming back up on the screen here that I described earlier. But that'll take any questions you have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We do have some questions from support members. Looks like first is Ms. Clausy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Previously, it was requested if there was an analysis done on projections and it seems that there still has not been an analysis of the actual accuracy of projections. Is that fair to say?
What we were charged to do was to peer review the methodologies used. And we found that the methodologies were of sound, consistent industry standard that we would do if we were doing the work ourselves.
So I understand what you did do, but so there was not an analysis of the accuracy of projections over the last five years or even further back.
I would defer to Dixit or anyone else at Baltimore County Public Schools.
So part of the task that Cannon had was to look at our methodology and ensure us that it meets industry standards, and that's what they have done.
You mentioned the survey responses. What was the timeframe of the survey responses?
So we've had two surveys. One was in July of 2020. And there was one in the February timeframe with community forum number two.
And in December of, December 22 of 20, there was a contract approved by the Board of Education, JBO 70221 Contract Spending Authority, $10 million related to contracted services for on-call special projects, architectural design. What is the relationship between your being awarded that and the MyI Pass? You were awarded with other firms for on-call minor projects, but also for special projects where no value was indicated.
So there are separate solicitations that we applied for both. We were successful on the MyI Pass and we were pre-qualified. The work is not awarded, we don't have a project from it, but it's a contract vehicle through which Baltimore County Public Schools could solicit proposals for us to compete on future work.
So that was in conjunction or not in conjunction with MyI Pass?
Separate.
And then maybe Mr. Dixit could speak to special projects where no values indicated. What, what variety of projects could that represent?
So what we do is when we bring those contracts to board, are really establishing a list of pre-qualified architects, civil engineers, mechanical engineers, and electrical engineers. There is no promise of any work to them. And in case of Cannon Design, they have not been assigned any work. They have really, to my knowledge, have never worked with us. So that is just means that they meet the qualification to perform work for us. Should we have work and should our team of engineers or architect select them for that job? And so far, they have not been selected for any job, to my knowledge. So if we are trying to correlate any of their work with any of the pre-qualified, just about every, every architect or engineer that is in town that has done schoolwork is perhaps pre-qualified.
I just want to point out that I did abstain from that vote. The next question is to Dr. Williams and Madam Chair Scott. Since the board just received this presentation, the document was just uploaded during this meeting and it was really quite hard to read that fine print. We understand trying to get all of the information together. What is the process for board members to submit questions and then receive answers that can be published?
So that's why we have our weekly updates. So any questions you can submit and will be shared in the weekly updates.
What about them being shared with the public?
I don't believe that's something that we've done in the past. You were talking about loading them up in board docs or something?
There was a website with MyI Pass. Maybe Mr. Mills can speak to that. What documents are there? There was a disruption with the ransom attack, of course, but.
Well, I'm sorry, were you speaking in regards to board docs or to MyI Pass website? Because I thought you were talking about uploading questions and answers to board docs.
I'm looking to understand the process where board members' questions can be submitted and answered and then shared with the public. So my question is, would it be in board docs or would it be in the MyI Pass website?
Do we have an answer for that?
So what we had done last time, and I'll have to have a conversation with Dr. Scriven and the superintendent. But what we had done last time, they answered those questions and posted it on website at that time. Since then, we have a new website, which is still being populated. But I do not see any issue sharing those responses with the board member immediately as we get it. We have been. immediately as we get it. We have been extremely transparent. When we started this program, one of the certain instructions we had from superintendent and the county executive is to be totally transparent. I do not recall of any project that we have done where there has been this level of transparency. So there is nothing to hide here. We'll share it with the board members, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm out of time, so I'll send the rest of my questions in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next is Mr. McMillian.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Mills. Sparrow's Point Middle School is in a very unique situation. Out of 175 schools in Bowman County, they share a building with Sparrow's Point High School. In fact, they share the auditorium, the library, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the locker rooms, the athletic fields, and the parking lots. When you did your study, how did you incorporate that uniqueness into your formulas? Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Board Member McMillian. In the initial high school recommendations, we did lift up, and there's a class of projects that would require stakeholder outreach, due diligence on land, and those sorts of things. We highlighted that inequity that exists at Sparrow's Point High School and middle school campus. And that's something that's, you know, I have a daughter who very recently was in the middle school ages, and as a father of that, coming along with the older boys, you know the sorts of narratives that could really go through an emotional situation. But, you know, not even kidding aside, it's something that's very personal and something we're very focused on. As we're going through the planning process, absolutely, we're looking for an outcome that brings the Sparrow's Point community in alignment equitably with the rest of the county in terms of their grade configurations. That probably means finding a new home for the middle school. The school right now, the high school, is crowded. The middle school's crowded, and we need to find a new place. Most likely, the middle school would have a new home as part of that process. Or you'd have to continue to grow that campus with more additions on that tight campus and still continue to look in there. We're looking at adjacent elementary sites potentially. We know there's a big industrial area that has future growth that might happen into it. So we're looking at opportunities to alleviate that inequitable situation. We are very aware.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Mack.
I have two quick questions. When we show an aggregate score, and then a number of schools have the same aggregate score, how do we determine ranking?
So there are decimals beneath the, I think they're just rounded at the whole number for presentation purposes, but the ranking is based on, you know, coming up with that numerical order.
Okay. And then the other question, and I apologize, but the slides went by pretty quickly, and the print was very small. I did not see Watershed Charter School included?
I need to go back and see if we've assessed that building. I can't remember if that was on our list or not. We know it's a unique situation there. I failed to mention to you all, so we did assess all of the special center programs, the crossroads, and others that are not a traditional elementary, middle school, high school. We did not include them in the benchmarking because their programs are so unique. They require a unique approach to measuring and accommodating them in the plan. Those are part of the MyIPass and will be accommodated as part of it. It's just, you know, while the facility condition assessment is consistent with there, but doing any sort of program comparison and equity, it's apples and oranges, and we didn't want to confuse the narrative about it, so we left them off of this report.
Okay, but you will have some type of report that does include schools like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all, the only questions I have.
Thank you, Board Member Mack.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Mills, going back to Sparrow's Point, this is a special case. And since we have, luckily, the presentation from Phase 1, we can see that Sparrow's Point is overcapacity in the red and projected to be at 136% overcapacity in 26, in 2026. And when we look at the middle school at Sparrow's Point, the overcapacity rating is, it's, I don't believe it's in the red as much as the high school is. If I'm looking at it, it says 109% in 2026. And my concern here is, this is a special case because we have to look at the whole facility, right? And we have to come to some conclusion here. And by treating the middle school and the high school in very separate ways, I don't want to lose the special case that this high school/middle school actually is.
Board Member Kuhn, great question. And let me see if I can address where I think you're heading. We are looking at this as a system, and we have a community like that that has these schools that are interdependent on each other. We design solutions for it that are comprehensive in nature to address both of those programs at the same time. The reason there's differentiated numbers is different parts of the building are assigned to different schools, so you'll see different metrics associated with each other. And however take it hard, we're very aware of that unique circumstance. And we've already in our initial recommendations, I've signaled that with that one class of projects that require future vetting, and that's part of the road forward as we finish the MyIPass.
Thank you. The next thing I want to draw your attention to is I'm jumping between Slide 16 and Slide 19. So basically, I'm looking at the capacity utilization for middle schools and for elementary schools. And what I'm seeing in elementary schools are lots of yellows and reds. And then when we get to the feeder pattern into middle schools, I'm only seeing one red, yellows in all sorts of places, and whites and blues. So I'm wondering if we need to take a closer look at the feeder patterns to understand what's happening, because we go from very overcapacity to very full, but not screaming overcapacity. I don't quite know how to explain that. And I'm concerned that we're missing something in the translation from elementary school to middle school.
There's a lot of indicators that could explain some of that. First of all, the buildings themselves dictate what the capacity is based on that state rated process for determining how the buildings use, et cetera. And it's the buildings that have the capacity. The enrollment projections are what they are. And sometimes there are family decisions that are made at that middle school level to look at alternatives, whether it's in private school sector charters, et cetera, maybe neighboring districts. Sometimes those decisions happen at those cusp of grade points, but really, I think it's less that than the former, where it's just circumstances of where you have capacity in your schools.
Thank you for that.
At feeder alignment and the boundaries as part of validating how this can be aligned for the long haul. We're working very closely with Melissa Appeler and the research department that handles those processes with the community, and they're hand in glove working with us on mechanics of the plan.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Rowe.
Yeah, so you mentioned in passing that you have detailed reports on each facility. And I noticed that when we got the high school report, we didn't see these charts with these rankings. Where can we get that information?
I believe some of this has succumbed to the ransomware attack here, but we've furnished obviously the reports that were made available to you through P. Dixitt's office and through the channels that were described earlier.
Okay, so there are rankings like this for high schools that we can see?
Yes.
Okay. And so Mr. Dixitt will get that to us?
So if I remember, in the high school presentation, you had a similar list that was part of the presentation, and it did have rankings attached to that.
Okay, but so what about each of the, Mr. Mills mentioned that each facility had its own report. Is that available?
That report is available. It is not on the website because of the detailed nature of that report, but some...
You know how fond I am of gigantic binders.
So yes, that report can be provided to anyone.
Yes, I would like that, please. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mr. Mills.
Good evening.
You had mentioned legacy projects, and I'm aware Lansdowne being identified as a legacy high school project. I apologize if I missed it, but could you review the legacy elementary and middle school projects that have been identified?
They're on, basically, everything north of Lansdowne on the CIP list. I don't have it at the ready on screen or at the moment. These are ones that have been given the name, the Schools for a Future Program.
Correct.
Includes, there's two new schools in the Northeast, I think an elementary and to accommodate growth, and there are several replacement schools and a couple of additions, I want to say. I'm sorry, I just don't have them right at the top of my memory.
Let me help you. All of the schools that have been approved by the board in the county's capital program and shown as fully funded, they are part of the legacy project. And I'll quickly name some of them. I may miss one or two, but Northeast Area Elementary School at Ridge Road, Red House Run, Bedford and Summit Park, and Northeast Area Middle School, and Pine Grove and Deer Park Elementary School, Pine Grove Middle, and Deer Park Elementary School, and Scott's Branch Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Dixitt. That's great to hear, because as you mentioned, Mr. Mills, Perry Hall Middle is the only middle school in the red in terms of utilization, and they have been waiting for relief way too long. So that new Northeast Area Middle School is critical to provide the relief that that school needs. So I'm pleased to hear that that is part of your recommendations to continue and that it has been flagged as a legacy project to move forward. And that's all I had. Thank you both.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from board members? Okay. My question is, well, one, again, thank you for the presentation. I thought this was very informative, and I look forward to seeing all of the recommendations and everything like that. So, and this was, did you say this was a projection for how far out? I think I missed that.
Seven-year planning horizon. It synchronizes with what the state expects when they look at capital requests.
Seven years. Okay, great. All right, well, great. Thank you very much for that presentation.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see your name or address you by name.
Oh, that's all right. Makita Scott. Thank you. Okay. And with that, I would like to make a motion to postpone items J through L to the April 6th board meeting, if there was a second for that.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Gover, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Could I what? Could you repeat that motion?
Oh, yes. I made a motion that we postpone items J through L to the April 6th board meeting. So it was, motion was made by me, and it was seconded, I believe, by Ms. Pastore?
Sure.
Ms. Mack?
It was a lot of people.
Ms. Mack? Okay. Yes. So, because it is quite late. So, and I would like everybody to get home safely. That's what I'm worried about. Yes, Ms. Clausy?
Thank you. I had a question and a comment related to your motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was your motion seconded? I didn't want to interrupt that.
Yeah, it was seconded by Ms. Mack, and we were about to vote, because...
Okay, thank you. So my question is, will that remove item K, which is just information, but there is some important information there related to the compass, our pathway to excellence?
Yes, it would remove that. We can discuss it at the April 6 meeting. What I'm worried about is the lateness and people getting home safely.
I understand.
After quite some time, so...
I understand. I just would prefer that it be left in board docs so that people can review it?
It is.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, I was going to request to add Policy 4005 to the Policy Review Committee agenda tomorrow because it relates to tutoring.
But the agenda, I believe, that has already been published.
I understand. And in reviewing the Saturday engagement and the additional information presented about our very much needed tutoring programs that are being ramped up even more than typically, there is a policy that prevents teachers from tutoring their current students.
Ms. Clausy, we're trying to adjourn. So if we could take a vote, please. It's late, and it's where we...
I understand. So I'm just going to make a request of you as the Chair of Policy Review, if you could consider that.
But I'm concerned about the welfare of our staff and all of our board members. And it is quite late, and we've discussed a lot, and I would like to make sure everyone gets home safely. So I hear your requests, and I will do my best to accommodate your request, but we're trying to adjourn, and I think it's appropriate now for us to take a vote. So thank you for that.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Ms. Gover, if we could go ahead and take a vote, please.
Madam Chair, my understanding is that there can be discussion before votes.
There is, and we've had the discussion.
I didn't finish with my time. I apologize, but...
Okay. Please go ahead with, please go ahead with your time. This is very discouraging and most unbecoming of a board member, I feel, because it's not taking into the consideration our public, our viewing audience, and other board members. But if it's that important for you to continue on, then please go ahead with the rest of your time.
I disagree with your presentation of that. You acknowledged me, and I had two minutes.
Please go ahead.
It's an issue of importance, and I would like, if Dr. Williams could also make a note of Policy 4005. Thank you.
Ms. Gover, may we take a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rowe? Ms. Clausy? Yes. Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Yes. I'm not asking any questions now.
We're taking a vote, Mr. Offerman? Ms. Pastore?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Most definitely so.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next hybrid meeting will be held Tuesday, April 6, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you for joining us, and the meeting is now adjourned. Good night.
Good night.